Okay, is everybody here? It's gonna be here. Okay, so I got a call just a minute ago and Tom is running a hair late, but he says, "Don't worry about it, go ahead and proceed without him." So, if you guys are good with that, I think we'll just go ahead and get started. Oh, we do have a quorum. Yeah, yeah, we will. We'll need to stall. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started with our Layton City work meeting. Well, excuse me, we're, tonight we have a special RDA meeting first. So, we'll start out with this RDA development, so I'll need a motion that we go into our redevelopment agency meeting, September 17th, at 5:32. So moved. Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so council, we're gonna need to have the minutes from the redevelopment agency meeting that we had on June 18th of 2020. Do any of you have any corrections to those minutes? Okay, I'll need an adoption of those minutes in.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of the redevelopment agency of Layton City, June 18th, 2020.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We'll move on to our last and final item, number two. And I'm gonna turn the time over to Lon Kow, who will be talking about our initiative taxing increment collection. So, Lon, time's yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. Tonight you have in front of you Resolution 20-04, which is simply a letter to the county and a resolution requesting that they initiate the tax collection period for the CDA, the Community Development Area Plan, where RC Willie's is located. Typically, these are initiated when you adopt the plan originally. However, we requested that they wait until we had a building there to collecting, to create increment before we started collecting it. And so that will begin on January 1st of 2021. It will last 15 years, or 1.705,000, so $1,705,500, toward RC Willie, whichever comes first. And we estimate that we will collect that funding before the 15-year period, after which the CDA will close.
Okay, excellent. But council, I know you weren't here when this was first initiated. Do you have any questions on it, or need clarification? No? Okay, very good. Then I guess I'll look for a motion on this resolution.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the RDA Resolution 20-04, officially requesting that Davis County initiate the tax increment collection period for the analog drive, community development project area plan and budget.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Being that this is dealing with funding, we probably need to take a roll call vote. So with that, I'll start out with Councilman Morris, since he made the motion.
Aye.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilman Bloxum?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So that basically concludes our RDA meeting. However, since we went into a meeting, now we need to have a motion to come out of this meeting.
His name was Robert. Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting and go into our regularly scheduled work meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, RDA meeting is officially behind us. So now, we can go into our work meeting. And then, thank you for all making that one single motion. So, we can start the Layton City work meeting, again, for September 17th, 2020. And as we usually do, we start out with our council reports, because each council member is assigned to various different entities or organizations. And it kind of is good to just kind of take this moment to kind of see if anybody has any business, or anything they'd like to share with their fellow council members.
I can start, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, we had our audit committee meeting this morning. Mayor and myself are on that committee. We discussed decisions with the audit that's upcoming. And both Alex and Tracy were there. We also had our outside independent auditor there to just kind of discuss the scope and what we're going to be doing. We also had an idea that we, like we talked about and discussed before, to have two citizens potentially be on the board with us to help with some sort of outside ideas. One of those individuals is a former comptroller from BYU, very distinguished in the field. The independent auditor was, didn't know who he was, but he knew the second gentleman, who he said had worked for the state auditor's office for many years, and actually taught this independent auditor kind of the tricks of the trade. So, both of them were highly recommended. And I think the mayor's gonna be making some phone calls, along with the staff, to try to get that up and running. So, we'll keep you posted as we move forward, but I was happy with the discussions and think it's gonna be good to be able to kind of see where we're at on the audit side and make sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Okay. Good report, Zach.
Madam Mayor, I'll go next. I think every time I bring up about the communities that cares, but the mayor and I had the opportunity to attend a suicide prevention training for the workplace. We'll actually finish that up tomorrow. And we have set a date of November 4th to get the key leader team in place and trained for the city. So it's moving forward, and a lot of support from Davis Behavioral Health on this. And I also attended a legislative chamber meeting, and they just talked about setting the priorities for this upcoming year. And I am going to be serving on the healthcare committee as well.
With your background, they'll be, they'll really reap the benefits of that. So thank you for stepping up on it. Councilman Morris, do you have a report at all?
The only thing I have is that the Utah League of Cities and Towns is having their annual convention next week. That will be as involved as we can be or want to be. Most of that will be virtual, instead of in person. So, lots of good training and presentations, and we should, we should take advantage of as much of that as we, as we can, that we're able to, so.
Yeah, there is, there's a lot to learn there, and you come away with some good ideas and a better understanding of what all the cities are doing along the Wasatch Front. So I think it's, you know, it's fun to, in the past, it's been very fun to attend. I don't know about sitting in front of my computer by myself, but, you know, I'm gonna do it. So, anyway, good job. Councilman Thomas, anything? Centennial meeting, or anything like that coming up?
Centennial committee will be meeting. That's under that.
I'm not part of it till Wednesday. There's a, there's a centennial meeting on Tuesday, the 22nd, at 4:00 PM at Parks and Recreation, for the centennial committee. And so we'll be discussing what they have planned, and whatever, we've got another year before we kick into it. But before we go, I'd like to welcome Tom here. Kind of missed you. Yeah. We voted on some property down by your barn, and we're putting in a snow cone check there, so a lot of help here.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
So people come pick more tomatoes or pumpkins? So, we were just, Councilman Dave, we are just doing our reports, and I don't know if you have any reports from any of your committees at all.
Not tonight, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on then to our item number two, which is our monthly training moment. This is a special moment that is brought to you by your city attorney, Mr. Gary Crane.
Here it is, without commercials, without ads, without anything. I take my mask off.
Without a mask, yes.
Without a mask. Okay. I can speak faster without a mask, thanks. Okay, so, one of the things that we're discussing this year, and I've got five minutes, so this is going to be the quickest presentation, but what we thought is, if I take five minutes at the beginning of every meeting, every work meeting, to just cover one item, just one planning item, that it will be extremely helpful. So I'm gonna give you a couple of things. I had a PowerPoint, but I'm just gonna put off the PowerPoint for now, just for a minute. Because we made, it probably will take me five minutes to get the PowerPoint up, not with Ed's help. I'm sure he'll do it in just a fraction of a minute. But what I thought I'd do is, this year at the legislature, they're probably going to require, by mandate, that all city council people and planning commissioners have at least four hours of training of some sort in land use. Some of that can be open meetings, some of it can be conflicts of interest. You can combine the two, because those are required trainings as well. But I think it's extremely important for boards, especially where you're just kind of hitting it new, for the very first time, some of you are. Some of you have had years of experience, and still, I'm learning. Every time I go through a presentation of some sort, I'm still learning about land use, and I've been at it for 35 years. So, there's a lot to learn. Land use is a very, very complicated area of the law. And it's also an area of the law where cities pay out the most in damages, followed by personnel. Those are the two areas. And so, should we spend five minutes on it? Yeah, we need to spend five minutes on it, probably, in each of our meetings. I wish we had more time, but I know you've got an agenda, and a lot of it is learned just by practicing, essentially. So, what I wanted to do today is just, just cover one thing. Ed, go ahead and put the different hats item up. What I thought I'd do is introduce to you your form of government. This form of government that we have in Layton is called the six-member council form of government, and it's called that for a reason. There is no mayor that essentially has veto power over everything that you do. You act together as a single council, but you wear a number of different hats. And the most important hats you wear in land use are administrative and legislative hats. And you change those from time to time. And the significance of that change is incredibly important. Because a legislative act, if you bring up the next slide, Ed, your legislative acts are very, very broad acts that you make. They're zoning, they're held to, they're zoning, they're ordinances, they're master plans, they're annexations, they're those types of decisions, long-range policy decisions. Your administrative acts are a lot more complicated, because those deal with you having to know your ordinance. Because you are only allowed in administrative, making administrative determinations, to use what you have in your ordinance. If you move outside of that ordinance, you take the, the risk of being sued over moving outside of those ordinance. There's a provision of state law that says, you can only require what your ordinance says you can require. So if you see something that needs changing, and it's an administrative act, such as a subdivision approval, conditional use approval, any type of administrative approval, such as contracts that you sign, land use contracts, those types of things, those would all be what are considered administrative acts, and they're strictly regulated by your, by your ordinance. So, what I thought we'd do tonight is just talk about one type, just for a couple of minutes. Zone change. Administrative or legislative? Legislative.
That's the other.
That's the other. It was a 50/50 chance. You knew that, right? And, and you know what? Any answer is a good answer in this forum, because, because you guys, some of you have had a lot of experience, some of you haven't had any. Okay, I won't focus on that, but it's a legislative decision, right? A lot of cities, when a legislative zoning decision comes before them, it's an interesting process, because you have very broad discretion when it comes to zoning, making a decision on a zoning decision. All you need is a rational basis. And that rational basis is generally a land use basis, which would be, number one, your master plan says that the zone ought to be changed. That's your number one best reason for making a zone change. If your master plan is opposite to what you're deciding, you better reconsider it. You better think about changing the master plan before you actually make that zoning decision, because your, your strongest rational basis is your master plan. You're also to consider the health, safety, and welfare of the community. That's, those are broad, those are very, very broad reasons. It just needs to be reasonably debatable. There are very few zoning decisions that actually end up in going to court, because the courts say, "Well, it's always reasonably debatable." And reasonable minds could always differ over your decisions. But just the same, you can make incorrect zoning decisions based on the fact that you go against your master plan, and you use the wrong reasons. You use public clamor, the courts call it public clamor, where a whole bunch of people come in and say, "We don't like multifamily in the, in the, in the city of Layton. We don't want multifamily in the city of Layton." And yet, your master plan says that multifamily are acceptable in this particular area. Well, change your master plan. You know, if you really, if that's your concern, you change the master plan. And then you zone according to those policy decisions you make outside of the sweat of the moment, let's, let's call it. You got a, you got a zoning decision on your agenda tonight. And I just wanted to let you know that generally what happens is, sometimes the lines between administrative and legislative blur. The zoning decision is made based on your master plan. If your master plan says that this is a good place for R18, or R110, or low-density residential, then the only things you should be focusing on in a zone change are, does the traffic circulate properly? Are the surrounding uses compatible? Is the master plan still up to date? Is there a mistake in the master plan? If, if the answer to that is all positive, then what you need to do is, you need to change the zoning to what you've designated it in the master plan. There isn't a mandate that you do that under state law, but there's a strong presumption that if your master plan says one thing, that it ought to be rezoned that way. The difficulty is when a developer comes in and you want to know what he's gonna put on that, that site. And sometimes, city councils get down into the details, way, way down into the details, on a zone change. And I'm gonna tell you that that is an inappropriate thing, is when you start to get into the, into the fine, fine details, because that is preserved for the administrative decision that you're gonna make next, which is the subdivision portion of it, or the site plan portion of it, or the, the site development plan portion of it, which you will see, which will come to you. And so, really, when you look at a zone change decision, the one you're gonna look at tonight, one of the ones you're gonna look at tonight comes with very little detail. And, but it is consistent with your general plan. And so the, the question is, you know, it doesn't come with a lot of detail. Should you ask where all the homes are gonna be, what the density, what the density's gonna be, where the streets are gonna be located? Those are not appropriate questions for the zone change, although a developer may offer those up. You have another zone, zoning decision tonight, where the developer is offering those up. And often, they'll do that to sell their project, or to sell the idea that the zone ought to be changed. That's great. But the problem is, is oftentimes, you're doing that outside of the administrative process. In other words, it hasn't gone through the administrative process, the planners have not looked at it, the planning commission hasn't looked at it, they haven't applied the laws to it. And what you're doing, if you tend to do that, is you're going into the details without looking at the law. You'll have the opportunity of looking at the law, at the administrative side of it. But tonight, what you're looking at in two different situations is just the zoning decision. And what can you consider in a zoning decision? Those basic fundamentals. Is it consistent with the master plan? Is it in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the community to, to approve it? And those are the, those are the decisions you'll make in order to make it an appropriate zoning decision. Transportation, access ingress, those types of things, surrounding uses, you can consider all those things. But should you be fine detailing the plan on either one of these zone changes? No, you may, you may accept what they give you, but until it's actually, actually comes down to the administrative decision, which is the, the decision related to the site plan, and related to the things in your ordinance, you're not gonna get into those fine details in a zoning decision. You shouldn't get into those fine details in a zoning decision. That's my five minutes. Next time, we'll talk about administrative determinations, and right after that, we'll talk about development agreements. I think these five-minute spots will be good, just for the purpose of being able to, just to review, even for me, the things that you need to be considering when you look at these zoning decisions.
Okay, you're not off the hook. Let's see if anybody has any questions, or any clarification.
Do we get five minutes for rebuttal?
You get two minutes for rebuttal. Actually, there's six of you, so you get 45 seconds. Any questions regarding that?
I can't, man, if I might. I think too many times, this is my opinion, I think too many times, we dwell too much on the pictures of what it's gonna look like, the details, like you're saying. And I think it would be helpful in many cases, this was brought up in the last, one of the last planning commission meetings, what are some of the other uses besides what the developer at that moment are proposing for that project? Because, let's say MU, it's not, it's not just maybe the apartments that they are proposing that night. It could also be banks, other things that many times we're not aware of. But once that zoning change is made, any of those other things can come in if that property's sold or redeveloped in a different way.
Excellent point. Excellent point. And you gotta remember that if this developer sells it tomorrow, and you change the zoning...
Yeah, you can change the idea.
So you gotta consider the uses that are approved for that zone. You really do. And, and then, when the developer comes in with a firm plan, then you go through the administrative process of determining whether or not it's something that, that is acceptable under your ordinance. What we're gonna try and do, in the planning commission, they've started to label the decisions legislative or administrative, to be able to indicate to you what types of standard you ought to apply. We're gonna do the same, if that's all right, in the city council decisions, to legislate them, or to label them one or the other. And I think it'll help as we go over these standards of review for these two, to be able to have them labeled for you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Gary. I mean, I, I know I've asked you a couple of times about just this, about, "I'm deciding this, what, what are my parameters? What, what does the law say?" And you've given me the answer, but this is very helpful, so thank you for putting it together for us.
You bet. We'll, we'll do this each time, just for five minutes.
Having that in the, in the materials will be very helpful, too. Very good.
Good idea. That's, well, thank you, Gary. We appreciate you taking the time to educate us there. And I guess you'll keep track of our minutes to go towards our total hours, huh? No, give us 15, 20. All right, well, thank you. Okay, item number three is a rezone request. Chad, are you gonna come up and present that one? Okay, very good. So Chad Wilkinson, who's our economic development director, will be presenting it, and it's regarding a, actually, an order, a zoning change.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Take this off, if that's okay. Hopefully you can hear me a little bit better. Just real briefly, yeah, we're gonna talk about, you know, very apropos to what we just talked about, we're gonna talk about the zone change application, which is a legislative decision. And just, you know, scroll down, we've got this, this information, just a little bit down this slide, but this is a, a zone change at 1650 North Main, as was mentioned. This particular zone change did go to the planning commission recently for their review. They recommended approval of the zone change. It's a zone change from CH, which is our highway commercial, to our MU zone, mixed use. There's the property there in red, just to give you a relation to the, the rest of the city. Here's a, a close-up view of the property, some of the surrounding, surrounding uses, you can see right across the street is Bayview City Park. This was a property that came to you just a little while ago, just over to the south and east, for a different zone change proposal, and some of the other surrounding commercial uses. The, again, the proposal is to go from CH to MU. In terms of the, the general plan, this is an area that's, that's identified in our general plan as a mixed-use corridor, will, will serve by transit and other services. This is a, a little bit closer view of that general plan. Excuse me. You can see that mixed-use corridor area of the, of the general plan, identified in the general plan, as an area that's appropriate for, for mixed-use zoning. We, our code, as we talked about in that previous slide, identifies slide, excuse me, identifies these town centers and these mixed-use corridors that are appropriate for this mixed-use zone. Sometimes as transition, but sometimes also as a place that higher densities are appropriate because of things like transit and higher traffic corridors, and those types of things that, that make these appropriate for higher-density residential. As, as mentioned, the applicant has provided us with just some conceptual plans. These are not what we're reviewing tonight. These are just a way for you to see what they have in mind. Again, this is a mixed-use building. This particular proposal would include actual commercial on the ground floor of the buildings, adjacent to Main Street, with some residential above, townhomes located to the rear of the property, just a couple other views of what they, they have in mind. As was mentioned by Gary, though, I mean, we are, these are very informational and good. This is a, a policy discussion, though, and legislative discussion about this particular use in this area. Again, this is consistent with the general plan for this area, as designated on the map. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can. The applicant's also in attendance, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer questions if you have any specifics.
So, kind of back to what Gary was talking about, and I know we'll talk about development agreements probably a little bit later, but is there any, do you see any commercial use that could be detrimental to the fact that this is surrounded by residential areas and a park across the street, and by a school?
No, the mixed use...
By a school, and stuff like that.
And it might be helpful for us, and we could be happy to, we don't have that in the presentation right now, but we could pull, potentially pull the list of permitted uses and conditional uses. Mixed-use zone, as that zone was adopted, implemented in the code, the uses were looked at very carefully to see which were compatible with those types of uses. We are looking at some potential modifications that we would bring to you at a future council meeting, for some expansion of some of those uses to some very, very appropriate light manufacturing-type uses that would be appropriate within close distance to residential. And we'll be taking some time to talk with you about those in the future. That's not part of the NICE proposal, to make sure you're comfortable with those. We do feel like there are some, sometimes they call them maker spaces, they're very light, you know, very, very light industrial manufacturing-type spaces that the applicant has indicated and interested in some of these ground floors, to, to attract tenants so that that commercial space can be viable. But the list of current uses in that mixed-use table, we feel are all appropriate, based on the surrounding uses and the types of uses that are along Main Street, and to the rear, those residential uses, and even interior to the development, if it does end up being a, a mixed use, you know, with, with that townhome component to it, that these would be uses that are compatible with that.
Well, I think what would be helpful for me, and I, I mean, I went in and looked it up, but it would be kind of nice, in our packets, to maybe, you don't necessarily need to put the whole table in it, or whatever, but maybe a link to the table that shows what are the permissible uses and stuff like that. I just think it would make it a little bit easier to find, and, and stuff for future reference.
You bet. We'd be happy to do that in the future. I think that'd be helpful. It's always available to you on our city website, too. We do have a list of those uses on the, on the city website, but we're happy to provide links to that. These, the mixed-use zone already anticipates that you need to have, that there are compatibility issues, so some of your heavier commercial uses are not allowed in the mixed-use zone.
Any other questions?
Great. Okay, thanks.
So far, we're clicking right along. We appreciate it. Thank you, Chad. We'll give Tracy a minute to get ready. But next up is our agreement between Layton City and Waste Management, and Mr. Tracy Probert will be presenting that information to us, who is our finance director.
Hold the mouse, Tracy.
Mayor, members of the council, tonight we'll bring to you Resolution 2058. That will be a recommendation for our solid waste collection contractor. Earlier in the year, I'm sorry, earlier in the year, we discussed the fact and extended the contract for Waste Management for one year, so that we could go through a request for proposal process. We've gone through that process over the last three or four months. We received three proposals from Waste Management, Rep... We received three proposals from Waste Management, Republic Services, and ACE Recycling and Disposal. All three were very professional proposals. They're all, all three very professional organizations would do a good job for the city. The process that we went through, one, I went through and read all of the proposals, reviewed those with Mr. Jensen, the city manager. We asked a number of additional questions to the proposers. I also took time to call references and to actually call people in the cities that I knew that used the different carriers to kind of get the best idea of what their service was like. So forth. So we went through what I feel like was a, a fairly extensive process. Ultimately, as far as price goes, Republic Services came in with a price on the first can that was four cents lower than Waste Management. As a staff, we did not feel like that price difference outweighed the current relationship and customer service that we're familiar with, with Waste Management, along with a number of other things in the proposal. And so our recommendation tonight to you will be to continue for another five years with Waste Management and to, through the resolution, authorize that the city manager, Alex Jensen, enter into negotiations for a final agreement and that he will be allowed to execute that agreement on behalf of the city. The agreement that he negotiates will obviously be based on the proposal that was presented by Waste Management and also based on the needs of the city. Are there any questions related to that process or clarifications?
So Tracy, if it's a five-year contract, does that keep the rates the same for five years or is that negotiated every year or?
No, in Waste Management's contract or proposal, they proposed to use what's called the solid waste index. It's a national index. Actually, I think it's a regional index. And so that averaged about three and a quarter percent over the last five years when I looked at it. Some years it was two something, some it was four something. Once we get the final agreement negotiated, then we'd be able to come back and inform you what that final rate is. And what we'll end up doing is looking at, we did this the last few times when we went through a contract extension with them. We looked at the five-year period and figured out what the average price would be over that five years and raised it to that level. So in the beginning years, we were bringing in a little more revenue than we needed to. And in the last couple of years, we were actually putting out more expense to pay for the contract so that we evened out over the five-year period. Then we didn't have to, you know, raise our rates every year on people. So that's what we would propose to do in this situation. The price that they proposed, currently they're charging five sixty-nine for the first can and they proposed five forty-four for the first can. So after we finalize everything, that may, it may be that we, you know, we don't have to do another rate increase for the five-year period. I'll have to calculate that out and see how it ends up.
Well, that's the beauty of RFPs. I says that's the beauty of RFPs in letting everybody know that, I mean, we're, we're conscious of the amount of money that we spend and the fact that it's our, our citizens funding that we're in charge of. So I appreciate that.
So my question, Tracy, has partially been answered. I was just curious what the other bid was. You said there was three?
Waste Management, Republican, ACE.
What was the figure? You said four cents difference on the one?
Yeah, the other one was, let me find that real quick. I don't think I brought my summary sheet with me.
I mean, even, I was just curious, closer.
It was, well, I hate to misquote in the public meeting what they actually proposed, so let me look at it right here real quick.
I mean, I think the process you went through was fair and good. I don't have a problem with it. I was just curious what the numbers were.
They proposed five fifty on the first can. So you had a difference of five forty, five forty-four, five fifty. I mean, they were pretty close on the first can. One difference on ACE was they were, they were significantly higher, I think almost a dollar higher on the second can. Whereas Republican and Waste Management were very close on the second can. We have about five thousand second cans compared to about twenty thousand first cans. So it was more critical to have it be real close on the first can. And that's the can that everyone's required to have. You're not required to have an additional can. That's optional. And you could even opt for a recycling can and get rid of your second can if you wanted to. So that's what made that price on the first can critical to the decision.
Thank you.
Just for kicks, what's a ballpark number of complaints you've received?
Of what? Sorry?
What's a ballpark amount of complaints you have received or do you receive many?
We don't receive a lot of complaints. We mostly receive calls because the, the relationship is mature. It's been going for seventeen years. We have a pretty constant stream of move in, move out. We do have, some people have a tendency when their neighbor moves out, they adopt their can, you know, that can be a problem. And, and then just repairs, you know, the, the cans wear out. People put things that are too heavy, the wheel breaks off, the lid breaks, the cans crack over time. We replace about forty to fifty a day of cans. So it's, it's an extensive relationship. That was one of the things that brought in the difference, not to go on and on. I know we're limiting on time, but one of the big differences that I noticed as I reviewed the proposals between Waste Management and Republic, Waste Management handles larger cities. You know, they have the capacity to handle Leighton and Orem and some of these that are our size or bigger. And ACE was the same way. They're handling West Jordan, South Jordan and some big cities. Republic was handling more like Washington Terrace, North Ogden, South Ogden, Highland, you know, some. So we were a little leery with the small price difference to change to someone that isn't currently, that I could see handling a city our size. And so how are they going to react to that?
Okay.
So just one quick question on those repairs and replacements, who, who does that fall to to pay for?
Waste Management covers that under our contract. One, one great thing about the contract we have is that we don't own the cans. And in these three proposals, there were proposals that the city would own the cans. And I had extensive discussions with them. And, you know, the, the two that aren't our current carrier were kind of pushing that direction. And the one that is our carrier, Waste Management, right now, they said, you absolutely don't want to get into that business. They said, that's a loss for us because you have to have a yard, you have to store cans. You're dealing with all the, you know, you're hiring a person because they have, Waste Management currently has one individual that that's all they do and they're dedicated to Leighton City every day. And they, they go around our city.
Well, that many calls, I can see why.
Yeah, so it's, you know, we're in a good position, I think, with that. Some people would argue, well, if you own your own cans, then next time you go out to bid, you have an advantage. I'm like, well, I don't know. There were a lot of things that told me that wasn't an advantage. So.
We appreciate your efforts and, and going through the process and, like I said, we, it sounds like we're getting a good resolution here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that to be done by June or July? When does the, our extension expire or will it, does it matter?
What we'll end up doing is we're going to enter in Alex and I will go and talk to Waste Management. We'll determine if, if they'll allow us to just implement that immediately or how they want to proceed. That'll, that'll probably be our recommendation is, okay, you've proposed this, so now are you willing to implement those rates and so forth immediately? And we'll just move forward from there.
All right. Thank you. Okay, item number five, we have Mr. Wilkinson rejoining us here and it's regarding the amendment of zoning ordinance. I could say an extension of a prior discussion.
That's right. Yeah, we wanted to follow up with you tonight with the, we had some refinements that we made based on some comments that we received from you and particularly from Councilmember Fitzpatrick. So we wanted to go through those really quickly. Then we have some answers on some other questions that you had that I'll, I'll also address as we go through this little short presentation. This is just again, a recap on the reason why we, we have this off-street parking chapter amendment. Want to go through each of those refinements. Like I said, though, on the first one, excuse me, electric vehicle charging stations. We had some discussion about this in a previous meeting after discussion with a consultant that we've asked to look at this parking ordinance. Their suggestion was that rather than making park, electric vehicle charging stations a requirement, that we simply facilitate them. So we've done that. We've said that they can count toward the minimum off-street parking requirement. We've also said that, you know, you need to try to put them in places that they're accessible to the building entrance, properly mark them with, with the proper type of signage and things so people know that they're in an electric space and that they'd still be in a standard sized space so that it's just like a normal vehicle parking space. So that's the, the refinement there highlighted on the screen. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. These are just addressing some of the, the questions that were raised or refinements that we needed to make to address some of the concerns from that last review. We've tried to make changes throughout the ordinance to be consistent with our citation of what gross floor area is. That's just a GFA. That's just to signify what we did. We went through and, and relooked at that to make sure we were being consistent. This particular revision related to continuing care retirement communities, these are communities that have a mix of different types of senior and assisted living type housing. We wanted to make it very clear in this case that if we had one of these facilities that had multiple types of, of care, in other words, assisted living mixed with nursing home, mixed with another type of, of maybe independent living use, that each of those would be calculated separately as required by the chapter. So we're not, there's not a lower rate. In this particular case, these types of communities often have independent living dwelling units where these are folks that are, it's more like a senior living type of a situation. Those are calculated at one per dwelling unit, but the rest of those, assisted living, nursing home, et cetera, as contained in this note, would be calculated by their own individual rate. So that hopefully clarifies that. We had two different school rates. As we looked at the different codes and different standards out there available in the Institute of Transportation Engineers manual, we decided that we didn't need those two. We, we decided that the private school and public school rates could be the same. So that's what we've done. We've combined those and, and we're calculating those based on the, on that same rate. So that's, that's the proposal and the refinement before you. This next one, we wanted to be consistent. We had had maximum shift. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the highest shift. So we've tried to correct that to make the right, the right language there. And that's been continued on other sections of the code, which you can see below on nursing homes. Professional office, the refinement there relates to the different rates. Essentially, on the main floor, there would be a different rate as you go up that. We found that there's efficiencies as you go up the different floors. So your, your rates change as you go up with a higher, higher floor facility, I guess is the best way to say that. So a rate for the bottom floor, a rate for those higher floors. And that's again, consistent with the rates that we found in the Institute, Institute of Transportation Engineers manual. In other words, there's some efficiencies if you put a multi-story building, multi-office building on a site. So that's what that's trying to reflect. Pharmacy drugstore, and this is something else that's throughout the code now, we've tried to make sure that we're, we're clear that the parking rate includes the minimum parking rate plus whatever we require in this table twelve dash four, which is our vehicle stacking for drive-throughs. And so that's a different table that refers to it. Before, we were being inconsistent in our references to that table. We've, we've made that consistent throughout the, the code. Another one that's related to that kind of consistency is animal grooming and animal daycare. We've tried to clarify that if we have an animal daycare and boarding that includes grooming, that there's, they're also going to need to include that animal grooming rate as well. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. What I, what I mean is sometimes they have those facilities, sometimes they don't. Again, that's another one related to vehicle stacking, referring to the table. This is another one. This was related to gross floor area, Brandon, this one? Okay, just that gross floor area clarification. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yes, we did have some that we found that when we made the conversion from the Word document to our Muni code system, that there were a few things that, that didn't make that cut for whatever reasons. This is one that we had to get back in there. Excuse me. Car wash, again, trying to distinguish between self-service and automatic and, and those different types of car wash facilities. Oops. This one was one that was, that was brought up during our discussions with Councilmember Fitzpatrick. Again, on a mixed use structure development, we want to calculate that based on the rates for those uses. Now, we've, we've gone over this in past meetings that we're proposing some joint use parking, some, some ways that you can show that you have varying maximum parking demand depending on your uses. That, that also will be calculated in the mix, but that base calculation is going to be based on whatever that minimum parking standard is for each of those individual uses. So we might want to make sure that that was clear, that we start out with the minimum parking for each of those uses and then we go from there. The, let's see, I want to make sure I'm covering this one. This one was one, again, that was related to an RV business that we wanted to make sure that we had parking for those places that accounted for the actual vehicles that were being brought in there to be serviced. So there's a requirement for some parking spaces for those large trucks and RVs that are being serviced at those facilities. And tire store, again, this is another one that we had kind of a, two different rates based on bays or based on square footage. And this one clarifies that you may have additional parking requirements if you have a store that's doing both, doing both tires and service type rates. Again, back to stacking, just referring to that twelve dash four. This is another one that was omitted during the conversion process. We put it back in there. This is just clarification on bicycle parking, where that's supposed to be located and locations and, and design of those spaces. This is that twelve dash four that we referred to earlier in the other table. That just makes some clarifications on the different uses that are included in each of those. One thing that was recommended by our consultant that looked at this for us, Hale Engineering, who's a very well-known and, and very well-respected traffic and transportation engineer firm, said that they're seeing a proliferation of drink, soda drink shops in Utah. And they said, we really ought to have something that addresses that specifically. So we did. So that's, you all, you all know the names and some of you may have punch cards or stamps. I don't know. But that's, that's to address that. This one was another one that we brought up to just clarify what on our joint use parking analysis, which I'm going to show you in just a moment, we have a statement that sometimes there are substantial conflicts that may occur between uses on that joint use. And we want to be clear what that substantial conflict entailed. So this is defining what substantial conflict means, when there's, when there would be considered to be a substantial conflict and when some of those overlapping peak demands would not apply in the analysis. So really what it comes down to on this one, I'm going to give a little more explanation. If you have two uses that have similar peak parking demand for more than four hours, then we'd consider that to be a substantial conflict and no reduction would be given for those two. So that's just a real brief nutshell version of that. Here's that table. One thing that we found as we looked at this was that our table, you know, we, we, we use the old rates. So we've updated that with the rates we've proposed to you for the, the parking. And that's reflected in the table now. So that's all, those rates are now reflective of the proposed parking rates rather than our previous code rate. Make sure we're all operating from the same code. This one is another example. We wanted to make sure that we listed down there that this is for illustration only. I think that came up as a, as a clarification from the council last time, either from Councilmember Fitzpatrick or somebody else, that we need to make sure that we're, that this is just an example. This is, you know, we'd have to look at each, each use individually and make sure that it's reflective of the actual parking count for that. That's kind of a summary of those refinements. Now I want to take just a moment and talk about some of the other questions that you had. We did take the time to reach out to our planning commissioner that has had some experience with some of these large loading facilities, large distribution facilities. Talked to him about that, looked at the codes from the communities. One, one was in southeast, well, the southeast Denver metro area where they have a large facility there. We also looked at some of the other cities that you had mentioned, Hurricane, with some of those distribution centers. What we found is that their codes are very similar to ours. They do have, some of them have provision for a minimum loading spaces required for various uses, industrial, et cetera. But what we found is that in those cases, that these uses, these distribution centers far exceed, all of them far exceed that minimum standard. I mean, they're, it's, it's, you know, you may have a standard that says that they're required to have six of these spaces for a 400,000-square-foot facility. These distribution facilities blow that out of the water by magnitudes of, you know, they're exponentially larger that they provide. So again, it's, it's less of a question of a minimum standard and more of a question, we believe, of operations. And we, we want, this is a very important issue. We're not in any way trying to, to not address it, but we do feel that there's other ways to address it. One thing that I found is I looked at some of those facilities in, in the Denver area in particular, is that some of those operationally have made some changes, it appears, based, based on my conversations with Commissioner Roberts and others, that they've made onsite changes that facilitate the stacking of vehicles on their site. I think there may be some opportunities, as I've looked at that, that site here in Layton, that there may be some opportunities to work with that, that user and say, hey, there's, there's some ways you could make some operational changes that could help with this situation, that could get vehicles off the street, that could provide for some staging area with the way their, their use is configured right now. So that's a conversation we want to have with them. We expect to have with them, and we want to make sure that we're addressing that. In this case, though, because we're talking about a specific off-street parking and loading standard, we feel that ours is comparable with other cities that we looked at, and that it gives some, some flexibility, but it also gives some very clear direction that as these facilities come in, we do need to look at that loading, at circulation. I think another thing on this particular use here in Layton is that it's, it has expanded above its original scope. And so that, that makes, makes some changes, right? When you, when you expand beyond your original scope, you have additional vehicles there. We need to address that. And I think we're prepared to do that. And I think this has been really good for us to look at these other facilities and kind of see some of these functional changes that could happen to address these concerns. But our recommendation still would be that we move our off-street parking standards forward as proposed, and that we address that particular issue, which we will address through discussions and through some operational changes with those individual users to try to, to address those issues. So anyway, that's, that's kind of my, my short, in a nutshell, happy to answer questions on that. Those are the, the big ones, I believe, that we've covered. If I've missed issues, we had some other issues that were brought up last time that we didn't receive any, any clear direction to make any changes, so we didn't. If you want to tell us something different tonight, that's fine. But that's kind of the big ones, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chad, just, just a quick question that, we talked about the soda shops. That reminded me, we have, things are continuing to change, and the economy continues to change, and especially with the pandemic of people. So grocery stores, Smith's, Walmart grocery store, and I think even Walmart, the, the larger Walmart, phoning your order in, then you go and you pick it up. And now they've dedicated, in some cases, 15, 16, 20 spaces that's, that are dedicated for the pickup of the, yeah, the online pickup. Is that, does this hit that scope? Does this ordinance talk about that at any, anywhere? Or are we?
We, we don't address that particular issue.
It seems to be kind of like a queuing thing, or a stacking thing?
Well, I think most of those facilities are, are well overparked. So there's not a, there's not a problem with any kind of minimum parking standard for those facilities. Their location, typically, they do put those convenient to, to the shopper and to their staff. Their staff has to take the groceries out to those spaces. So a lot of times they are, they do take up spaces that are located fairly close to the stores. But we've never had an issue where they were taking out enough spaces that it created an issue with minimum parking standards. You know, Smith's, for example, has, has plenty of parking, excess parking. It's further away, but it's still, it still meets our minimum standards. I, I think also part of that, you know, as you think about the trade-off, this is a customer that would have come and parked in one of those regular spaces anyway. They may be there for even a shorter time period. So in, in some ways, it's already, it's already accounted for in our existing parking standards, because, you know, they, those spaces would have been used by someone parking and going in and shopping anyway. So we haven't seen any issues with that. I think we're going to continue to have adequate for those types of uses. Yep.
Chad, I appreciate you looking into the industrial thing with Smith's. And I still think, I, I, I think it's okay with me now to proceed with the ordinance on that aspect of it. But one comment I will make is, two of them actually, is something really needs to be done with the in-lane parking down there. I don't have as much problem if they're off the side, even if it's a red curb. But a lot of those trucks are parking in the traffic lane and blocking the lanes of traffic. So I think that's probably a law enforcement issue there that needs to be taken care of. And if that, I mean, that would help, at least then the traffic can go in. Because as it was brought up to me, and I think Don maybe recalls a conversation when Randalls were first proposed to go down in that area. In the planning commission, there was a question that came up about, to the firepeople that were here one night, about, aren't you guys worried about all that petroleum stored there? And their response, and maybe it was even Don that asked the question, their response was, that's the least of our problems there. If we had an ammonia leak from Smith's with all their cooling systems, it would be much bigger emergency than anything would happen at Randalls. And as it stands right there, many times, there's no way emergency vehicles are going to get in there at some times. So it really should be looked at and pursued with some urgency, because it could possibly be a public health, an emergency situation. Because there's times where you're not going to get an emergency vehicle in there, because there's one way in and one way out. And many times, it's blocked. You can't even get up and down the road.
Yeah, we totally agree, Tom. We think this needs to be addressed soon. And, you know, Alex and I talked about it just today. We think this is something we need to have some conversations very quickly. So.
Okay, thank you for looking into it anyway.
Yep.
My only other comment, as far as the ordinance goes, is I'm a little hesitant to shorten down the length of the stalls. I think they should probably remain at the 20 feet. That's just my opinion. As we move forward.
I agree. I think you've done a great job on limiting and shrinking the number of stalls. I'm in total agreement with that, to avoid some of these big, huge parking lots that aren't used. I, I think that's a great idea. But I'm not so sure about the dimension of it.
And I'll kind of get all the questions, and I'll kind of respond to those as we go. So.
Okay. And then I just want to, and I, to let everybody know, I, I reached out to Chad and his staff today to thank them for all the work they put in to responding to all my concerns. I still have two issues, and I'm probably the only one that feels this way. And as I told Chad, I want to bring it up, so it's on public record that I have a concern about these two issues still. But as it is written, maybe short of the 20-foot length of the parking stalls, I do support what they've done. And that is, is I still don't like the idea that travel trailers can be parked in your yard for up to 24-hour, or well, anywhere, in your, on your property, not, it can be in the middle of your yard. And I, I just have a problem with that. And then I still don't like carport as the primary option for home building. I know we have a lot of homes that are already that way, and I understand that, and I get that. But as we move forward, and most, I, I can't think of the last time there wasn't a garage put on a new home, a single-family residential detached home in, in years. I, I still think that that should be the option, that carports can be on accessory structures or built in addition to a car, a garage on a single-family detached unit. That's just my personal feeling. I think it's a safety issue. I think it's an aesthetic issue for the city. I think it's a code enforcement nightmare waiting to happen. And, but with that, the only other question I have is, it makes reference to the Development Review Committee, and who is that?
The Development Review Committee, there's, there's a, a board that's appointed by the, by the city council that looks at these various applications, looks at, so you've got the Designer View Committee, which is that, that body, Designer View Committee looks at those designs, and there are architects and people that have that type of expertise. The Development Review Committee is staff. It's, it's a committee that's made up of the city planner, city engineer, our fire officials. Those folks, we meet regularly and review these applications, and that's what that committee's talking about.
Okay. And that was the only question I had. Thank you again.
I wanted to, before I go on with some responses, some of those, I, you reminded me, Don, I wanted to acknowledge the work that Brandon Ripian's here today. He and Tim have, have had so much work that they put into this ordinance, many, many hours of research and, and, you know, refinement. So I want to make sure that we acknowledge the work that they've done and thank Brandon for that. So, and Tim, he's, he's not with us tonight, but he's done a lot of work as well.
Very good. Did you have a question there?
Yeah. Thanks again, Chad, and all the staff, and Don, for all you did, all the questions that you asked, and all the things you dug into. I mean, we appreciate you doing that. My question's more in terms of the, how we kind of move forward, you know, with, kind of similar to what Councilman Morris was saying about the ability to kind of change to new circumstances. And what I mean by that is like the queuing at a drive-throughs and stuff like that. I know, I noticed that there's a minimum number of stacking spaces for restaurant drive-throughs. Just, this is maybe anecdotal, but it seems to me that the pandemic has brought on a barrage of people going to the drive-through, where they just don't go inside to eat anymore, even fast food restaurants. And, you know, Popeyes, I don't know if you've noticed, Popeyes in the last two weeks on Antelope is queuing out into the, into the street, you know, into Antelope Drive. And my, my concern is that I want to make sure that our code is feasible or flexible enough that we don't have a minimum standard for parking stalls if the industry changes where it's mostly drive-through and carry-out instead of sitting inside, if that makes sense.
It does.
I just kind of want to make sure that that's kind of out there, and maybe talk me through how we would change that, or what are, how we are flexible to changing economic circumstances.
You bet. I'll go ahead and then I'll start there, and I'll kind of move through some of these others. But we had some discussions about that. We thought about that quite a bit. Of course, we're all in the same boat. We've all been through the drive-through lately and witnessed the same thing. I think we've, what we would propose would be to take a wait-and-see approach on that particular issue. I think we've come up with some standards for our queuing and stacking in particular, that we feel are going to address some of the shortfalls we had before. I think as we move through this, if we see that this is a continuing trend, we may need to come back and revisit. Some, some places have so much stacking and queuing just as a, as a function of their business model. You guys are familiar with some of these places, these restaurants that have just a huge amount of queuing and stacking, because they know they need it. We've tried to come up, tick the way, yeah, we can say names. But, but we also know that, that not everybody has those. We've tried to come up with some good middle ground there. Those folks tend to anticipate what they need and, and come through with those standards anyway, with a higher standard than what we would propose. But we would, we would be willing to be flexible on that, and we understand. We have noted that some places, rather than a drive-through model, it's a, it's a pull-in-and-take-out. Parking spaces make a great place for that. They can just convert those spaces directly to, you pull in here, grab your food, take it away. So we think that, I mean, all of us hope that, that someday we'll get back to a place where we can be going to restaurants and enjoying a dining experience. So again, our, our recommendation right now would be a wait-and-see approach with the acknowledgement that we may, we may need to revisit this as we go forward.
And I wasn't suggesting any, any changes, just the idea that I hope, I'm glad that it's noted that you've seen it too.
Yep.
Has definitely changed the way that we get dinner and lunch, and hope that our code can be flexible. So thanks, Chad.
Certainly. I'm going to kind of go through some of those other ones really quickly. On the 18-foot dimension, that's a policy issue. We recognize that. We've spent quite a bit of time coming up with those dimensions, looked at a lot of other city codes. We mentioned some of that last time. You know, we, we feel that what we found in those codes is that if you're not diminishing that, that maneuvering space that's located behind those spaces, that 24 feet, which is key, that, that 18 feet is adequate. We, we do understand that, you know, there's some concern about that, and we're, we're happy to do, you know, the council gives us direction, we'll move forward that way. I know that there are some of the developments out there that, that are waiting for this standard to see if, if this will be reduced. We did mention that we've done quite a bit of extensive looking at different facilities, including our own. We do feel that 18 takes care of almost all the, there, there are exceptions. We, we totally recognize that. There are some larger vehicles, but we found that those are fewer than you might think, and that most vehicles can be accommodated in an 18-foot space, provided, this is key, and we're not trying to diminish this, provided you have that 24-foot. If you, if you try to shrink both of those, and the cities that have gone to an 18-foot space, I think without question, Brandon can correct me, all have that 24-foot maneuvering aisle. So is that, yeah. So there are some, there are some cities that actually reduced that maneuvering aisle and kept the 20-foot, but the net effect is the same. You, you still end up with about the same distance to, to move. So again, we would, we would still keep our recommendation that 18-foot is adequate, and, and will give some additional flexibility in development and, and design of sites. But we also respect that this is a policy issue, and we'll take the direction that the council gives us on that. We, we can talk a little bit about carports some more. We didn't get any real sense that you wanted us to move on that RV issue, the, the parking of RVs temporarily on a site for 24 hours or less. But that certainly was brought up last time. We didn't, as we had that conversation last time, we didn't see that there was a need for us to go any further with that, so we didn't. On the carports, though, maybe, Brandon, maybe we can bring up those slides really quick. I'm going to give him the mouse. Just to recap, the, the carport issue was something that was brought up by our planning commission. As we have thought about this issue a little bit, really what they were talking about was trying to retrofit some of these existing sites. The, the intention was never, you know, certainly, they, they wanted to make some flexibility. So I won't say that they weren't thinking about new construction, but I think it was acknowledged that most new construction is going to build a garage. But primarily, what they were talking about was a situation where we had, again, a kind of a retrofit, maybe that first slide, yeah. So this is a good example of an older neighborhood where you have an existing driveway. Somebody comes in and says, you know, we want to convert that garage space into some living space. They have room on one side to put some additional parking, and they can meet all of our separation standards. So next slide there, Brandon. So they come in and propose, you know, rather than building a garage, they build a carport. They have adequate room even for another car to the side, some additional parking behind. That's really what our planning commission had in mind. I think we were, we're definitely willing, if, if we wanted to confine that to some of these existing retrofit-type situations and not have that be available for new construction. I think we, that, that clearly was their intention, was that as we have folks that come in that want to make use of existing space, that want to reinvest in their property, and maybe have some, some additional options. And that's clearly what the council, the commission was trying to get at, was, do we want to preclude someone? Right now, the way the code reads, you have to maintain that, that garage space, right? So if someone comes in and says, I'm going to convert my garage, you'd have to provide not just a carport, but a garage space comparable to that someplace else on your property. That's what happened with this individual applicant. There was a problem with that, being able to provide that space. Eventually, I mean, they complied with the code, but they had requested that they'd be allowed to, to have some flexibility. And that's where the planning commission asked us to look at that, see if there was a way we could provide some additional flexibility there. That's another one where we, again, we're, we want to represent the position of the planning commission to you as the council. But again, ultimately, this is a policy decision by you. We understand the issues that are surrounding these types of, of structures, the concerns. We, we totally, you know, we get that. But the intention of the planning commission was to provide additional flexibility. And if, you know, if you want to give us some additional direction on that, we'd be happy to take that. Did I cover everything, all the questions? I tried to. Did I get yours, Clint? Okay. All right. Any other questions I can answer? We can talk more in the regular meeting too, if you'd like.
That's what I was just going to say. If you have any other questions, we can bring it up later. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to our mayor's report. And basically, what I'm doing here is having a follow-up on some past discussions that we've had. And we'll start out first with Mr. Price is going to give us a update on our discussion regarding pickleball, and what are some options there? So, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening. Let me see if I can get this started.
I'm crying.
Cute.
Again, thank you this evening. Before we get too far into this, I, I simply would like to thank you for last council meeting. For us to be able to understand the direction you want to go, we need to hear from you. And I think at that time, we, we heard some real good comments and concerns. We tried to take those comments back as staff and work on them and, and move forward with, with those thoughts in mind. This evening, we have a, an idea that we'd like to bring forth for pickleball in our city. And we'll, we'll talk about all of these concerns that you brought up as we go through this discussion. You're, you're probably familiar with this. This just showed basically the locations that we have available for pickleball and some of the ones we do have now. Tonight, we want to concentrate on just three of these. We have Andy Adams Park, Harmony Place Park, and Ellison Park. And the idea that we're proposing this evening works best if we look at all three of these together. It simply congeals together as what we believe is a fairly good way forward. And so we'll dive into this. Please, if you have questions, give me a call or not a call, but just ask. First up at Andy Adams Park, we looked at that. We took a step back and we considered your thoughts. One of the ones that really made a lot of sense to us is what Councilman Day brought up, and that is if we're going to spend additional money, is this the place to spend it? And so we looked at this closely, and we are now proposing as part of this overall project or plan is to go back to one tennis court and two pickleball courts. This is where we originally started with our neighborhood parks. This is how Sandridge Park was developed. And it's been a wonderful model for our neighborhood parks. This way, we can do it within the existing footprint of the two existing tennis courts. We do not have to have a new retaining wall. We don't have to replace the lights, and we don't have to go through some of the expenses that we talked about last time. This project, as it's shown here, can be constructed within the current budget of $150,000. We will not need to ask for an amendment to the ramp budget of $186,974. That money can simply be put or kept in the ramp fund for another project that we'll talk about. Because this is already budgeted, and we're working, as you can see with the plans, this can be built in the spring of 2021. So this spring, as soon as we can get a contractor out in the park. We feel that it's a good response to a neighborhood park and both of these amenities. At Harmony Place Park?
Hey, Dave, before you go on, do you want to flip back to that screen? And just so that some of the folks that are here or watching online, kind of define your colors and what those represent with your layout, because obviously, the blue was the existing area, but now you've got the yellow going down the middle, which I'm assuming is probably a net this time versus a wall like last time, or a large fence. Do you want to just define that for us?
Yeah, let me walk through this. And thank you, Mayor. So to begin with, on the outside, these little circles, that represents just the existing retaining wall that's there. That's the rocks that you've probably seen if you've been up to that park. It's doing a fine job and has for years. The court, as it will be rebuilt, completely reconstructed, it will have this outer fence line in blue. That's a 10-foot tall fence, and it provides that protection for the people that are playing tennis in there so they can keep their balls interior. The yellow is a six-foot fence, and the red is a four-foot pickleball fence. We also, by going back to this plan, we can address a lot of the things that Mr. Thomas brought up. And that is that as we have an accessible walkway up to the courts, we also have a very nice pedestrian lair or corridor that they can be in between these courts. And so we also have benches and shade structures in this little area that as you're waiting to play on either side, you will be able to enjoy the space. The other thing that it gives us is it gives us an independent access or an entry gate for each court. And so you won't have to walk through one court to get to another.
Thank you.
And that's important for both tennis and pickleball. We believe that it's a real nice approach, and we'll accommodate play here very well. I think that's about it. Is there any other questions about this complex?
No, I think it I think it just helps so that everybody realizes that you listened to what our concerns were, and you've outlined it here and addressed it. So I think that's I think that's commendable on your behalf. So thank you.
Thank you.
On the tennis court, the yellow line attached, yeah.
Right here?
Yeah. What's that?
That's a six-foot fence.
Where's the gate?
They're shown, I think they're difficult to see, but there's a gate right here.
Oh, looks yellow to me. Okay. No, that's all I I couldn't see a gate to get in.
Yeah, and we
It'll last longer, but, you know, we ought to put a gate, yeah.
We did a little research, and by lining these gates up across from each other, there's less movement of balls from one area.
From court to court, yeah.
And then there's also a gate on this end, Dave, so.
That's fine. No, I just I couldn't see it on here.
And so we think it's a real nice approach to our neighborhood park. It also gets back to what Mr. Day was saying, is that we're spending the money in the right place. And so I'll move on to Harmony Place. Again, we're following the same direction here. This park is currently funded, and we're, again, recommending one tennis and two pickleball. This park is is funded through impact fees, ramp funds, and a developer contribution of $361,000. The smaller pickleball footprint will allow us to return $76,000 to the budget. And that can, again, be used on a different project. It's $76,000, and we'll talk about that as you look at the cost of the next project. $76,000 will seem very small when you look at the overall cost of Ellison Park. But you have to remember that when we talk about $76,000, it's very narrowly defined to the removal of two courts, which we had originally proposed for this area. It does not, we do not have to think about all of the construction amenities that come with developing a new park space. And so we already have water at this park. We already have sidewalks at this park. All of those things we don't have to consider when we looked at the $76,000. I hope that makes sense. Again, because this is fully funded, we, again, would like to start in the spring of 2021. As soon as we can get a contractor onboard and out in our park, that will be the limiting thing, is they're just very busy right now. The third, Tom, please.
Yeah. Are those courts lit there?
They are not. That's one thing that we looked at is, in our neighborhood parks, we are proposing to not include lines. The only reason Andy Adam has lights is because they've been there for 30 years.
Well, and you don't butt up right next to a resident either, right? Correct?
And so, no, I'm fine with them unlit.
And that's how Sandridge Park is. You know, people play right up until it gets quite dark, but then they go home. And so the last, the third component of this idea is that we build a complex at Ellison Park. And we looked at this because, number one, Ellison Park is the right place for this type of development. We don't have to worry about neighbors that are having noise issues with a whole bunch of people playing pickleball or the other sports. We have the room to have this complex centered in the park to give us a bit of a buffer. This complex, we would have lights so that we could extend the playtime, both in the morning and in the evening. And as you look at the cost of this park, you have to remember that this is completely undisturbed ground or lightly disturbed. And we are all having to bring in all of the utilities. We are including a very nice restroom for this part of the park, which will serve not only the pickleball complex, but the future development of this area of the park. It will also take a lot of pressure off the north soccer fields that you can see right down here. And so to just get your bearings, this area right here is the north edge of the soccer fields that are in the detention pond. This is where our outfield fences for softball are. And this area right here is the gravel detention or parking area. And so we would be using part of that gravel parking lot for the development of this complex. And at this stage of development, we will continue to keep the gravel parking lot there. We're not proposing to asphalt that at this time, because we are still in a little bit of flux as to what the final development of this park will be. And we would hate to spend a lot of money on an amenity that will just be taken out. The one thing that we did look very closely at is the location of the pickleball courts. We felt that this was an ideal spot for those, because it's right along the main east-west walkway of this park or the spine of Ellison Park. And so this walkway that we are proposing right now goes straight down between the softball complex, the two fields of the softball complex, to the crow's nest. And that will eventually extend to the east. And so it provides, and it will provide, a real pretty walkway for the park. It also organizes our park. And so it allows us to build the proper amenities around it. One of the key things is that this allows us to move forward and add additional courts as we see fit, and in the timing that you want to move with. We could move, you know, as soon as you want, with two to four to eight additional courts at your request. The funding, park impact fees, we are looking at $380,000. And ramp monies, we're looking at requesting half a million dollars, $500,000. These are both dedicated funds. This does not compete with any of the projects that we are currently have on hold, or projects that could be developed with general fund dollars. Both of these funds are dedicated solely to parks and parks and recreation parks, things like that. And so we think it's a real good source. The thing that we looked at with Mr. Probert's help is the condition of these funds, and both of these funds are very healthy right now. And as you can see, because we would go through the normal budgeting process on this and work through the ramp commission, we're scheduling construction July 1. That's when the budgetary money would be available. But because both of these funds are healthy right now and well-funded, we can watch them for a couple more months. And then if the council would like to move quickly, we can do a budget amendment and start this project again as soon as the contractor is available, the spring of this year.
Good. Good homework. I mean, I compliment you on that. Couple of questions. How close, how wide is the sidewalk? 12? 10?
Depends on which area you're looking at.
I'm sorry, from the court to the softball fence, the one that runs between that, yeah.
That's 10 feet.
That's 10. And it does it butt right up against the fence?
On the
In right field, on the, right there?
Yeah. And please remember, these are very conceptual drawings.
I know. I'm just getting my word out now before I forget.
Yeah. Right now, it is shown with that pickleball court right next to the sidewalk.
Okay.
There is a bit of a buffer between the sidewalk and the softball field.
Okay. And and conceptually, you'll put like a higher fence on the west side?
Or an appropriate spacing.
Or a space, okay. As long as that's addressed, I'd hate to have a softball come into the field, you know.
Sure.
Only Grant, no, Grant couldn't hit it either, so it wouldn't matter. So spacing-wise, if that's something we can address whenever.
Dave, I just have a really quick question. I really like what you've come up with. My only concern is forfeiting some of that temporary gravel space. I already receive a lot of phone calls about concerns on Hillfield during soccer tournaments and stuff about how dangerous that road is. And a lot of people utilize these spaces to park. Is there any ability above where you have the bathroom to maybe gravel more of that triangular area to at least add a few more spots in? Because if you've got pickleball now, less parking, and a soccer tournament going on, then I unless they parked across the street at the elementary school, I don't know where people are going to park, because the roads are full. So.
You know, there's, there's a couple approaches. We can do that, Don. We'll be removing some of the gravel from where the pickleball courts are, and it could be reinstalled out there.
Okay.
We'll certainly look at that as we go through the design process.
Dave, just a, just a quick question. Maybe we can, we'll probably have to have this discussion will keep going. But I'm still questioning the tennis courts, the popularity of tennis, talking about two new tennis courts when pickleball is going like this. And we haven't seen numbers or anything that tells us anything about tennis.
We will step right into that.
Is that?
But Mayor, if you prefer, we can come back after.
Okay, so we've got four minutes left. Council, last time I did not give you a break. Do you want a break? Between meetings?
No, I want to get the information.
Okay. What I'm going to do here is, Mr. Price, if you could, why don't you bring up what slides you've got regarding the
I'll just make one comment first, Dave. I think you've done a great job, but but I'm gonna come along with Dawn on this one. All of that dirt east of these on Ellison Park, that we, yeah, we need a lot more parking, even if it's temporary down there, because that's a complaint that I get all the time on Ellison Park is just not enough parking. And all that is, is a bunch of stockpiled piles of dirt, which could be even consolidated in and make some more parking. So that would be my biggest suggestion on what you brought forth here tonight, is to not just do a little bit, but do considerably more temporary parking if nothing else.
We certainly can do that. One thought to keep in mind is, a lot of times, they're parking out on the road simply because they do not want to walk this distance, you know, from this area. We, our staff has noticed that the road will fill up, and this will be absolutely empty.
Yeah, I understand that problem.
You'll never stop them from parking on the road, because it's the easiest way to get to the fields.
It's like the truck.
I mean, you know, but by adding some parking up there, at least after the road's filled up.
They have a place to go.
They, they gotta, you know, yeah.
So just in a moment.
So then you're, you made your adjustment with the ramp funds will not need to take place then now with this, right?
It will not need to happen. And so, again, just quickly, this is the potential for pickleball there down the road. But more importantly, tennis in Leighton. We, we have two slides here real quickly. Our tennis lessons have held steady in their enrollment. I've shown the percentages of kids that are in our program. The one limiting factor is the number of teachers that we get. And so we're holding very steady with our youth tennis program, and we see that throughout the other cities. Through the nation, tennis is holding steady. It is not growing as quickly as as pickleball, but it is held steady. The chart on the right is the total number of tennis players at 17 million in the United States, and then high school participation. As you can see, they've held steady over the last 10 years. We feel that tennis is is still a viable sport. We do understand and recognize the fact that you guys have noticed that the courts are empty a lot of times. And we don't argue that fact. We do feel that part of that is because of the addition of tennis courts at both of the high schools. And so they, people have a tendency to migrate to those new courts. The way we approach it is simply that it might be, it is a good amenity for our neighborhoods, and it is one that we can accommodate and still have this pickleball complex. And it's much better to build a beautiful eight-court complex now, make sure it fills up, and then come back in an appropriate amount of time and add to it if we need to. If we jump in with a mega complex, we can't pull that back. That money's gone. That's where we're at right now.
The, I don't, I don't mind the tennis. I mean, to have a tennis amenity, I think is okay. But because tennis, I, at one time, you were going to make a, I don't know what you call it, an additional courts on a tennis court?
And if I could, Dave, these new courts, we still would propose that we stripe the tennis courts for pickleball. That does a couple things. Number one, if we're worried about the use, you know, pickle or tennis people being able to use our courts, I worked with Ed, and he says that we can schedule those, just like we do pavilions and other things. They can sign up and have a dedicated time to play tennis. And so our tennis players would never have to be out of a place to play. The other two The other two things that it does is by striping those courts, it allows us when we have a community event to very rapidly double the amount of courts that we have available for pickleball. And so on normal days, we just, we function with what we have in pickleball. If we wanted to have a tournament or a clinic, we could immediately pop up with our existing equipment from the gyms, another dozen courts. And so that's why we think it's just a good multiple use of courts.
I think, I think that is good.
And by the way, at the national championship for pickleball, almost about half of their courts are multi-use courts. They stand up pickleball for their tournaments.
Well, let's throw in another one, since you used the word multi. Do you got basketball?
We do.
For the kids?
Yeah, the Harmony Place Park. We don't because the school has courts right there.
Oh, okay.
But we could look at basketball in these multi-courts as well. That's very popular right now.
Yeah, I mean, but if we do, I know this has been a pet peeve of mine and I'm sorry, but I don't care. Put in some eight-foot baskets so kids can really play.
For little guys.
I mean, they, you know, and I realize grown men, not me, younger guys are going to go out there and play rough ball, you know, so make them stout. But these kids, none of them can't play till they get about seventh grade, you know, and if we're making a neighborhood park, let's make it so them little kids got a basket when all the adults aren't being hogs so they can play.
Yeah, it's, it's an excellent idea, Dave.
That's, and that, but I, you know, I think, I love the idea. I appreciate you taking a curveball and having to do some things and you've done it well.
It's helped us. You know, just as I close, we believe and we will wait to hear what you say, but this is a balanced approach to pickleball, tennis and basketball.
It is.
And it is something that we are prepared to and ready to fund immediately with the existing monies. We don't have to go into debt. We don't have to be concerned about that.
Well, I want to commend you once again on taking the feedback from the council here and certainly, you know, we've had, I know we've had some citizens' input as well. I want to thank them and definitely will take some action here, but for the time being, we just want to say thank you. And I know that I had another item on my report, but sorry, Mr. Apolloni, I, we're going to put you off until our next meeting and perhaps we might even add some more to it, so be prepared on that one. Okay, so Council, I'm going to wrap up our work meeting. And do you want to stand up and stretch or you're good?
We're going to do a pledge, Jean.
Okay, well, let's just go ahead and proceed then. I'd like to welcome, hang on, wait, I, yeah, I got to wait for Kim so she can school that up, so I totally forget all the time. Yep, that's all you get.
Not leaving, right?
Huh? Yeah, he is. We're going to have to address it on a, I want to give him an adjust time and I feel like we can address other concerns as well, so I think we need to bring him back up.
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, you're good? Okay. Let's go ahead and proceed then. I'd like to welcome everyone out for our official Layton City Council meeting for September seventeenth. Typically, we start at seven PM, but however, most of you who are here witness the fact that sometimes we get into some discussion that does need to carry on, which we did, and I appreciate that. My goal here is to make sure that we allow people enough time to voice their opinion and not cut them short because I think it's critical in the decision process. And so again, I appreciate your patience there. As always with our council mem, with our council meetings, we have one of our council members assigned to conduct the opening exercises. So with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Councilmember Dawn Fitzpatrick.
So tonight, I will lead the pledge and following that, Councilmember Dave Thomas will give the invocation. So please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before Thee in this council meeting, we pray for Thy help. We pray for Thy Spirit. We pray that as we do things that we might do so in a, not just a civil manner, but in a manner in which we accomplish things, which we do things forward. We pray that all that are involved will have the best interests of everybody and not just the interests of one. We're grateful for this great country and the ability to do the things that we can do. And we pray for this country because it's going through some tough times right now. And we pray that things will be able to be recognized and be dealt with. And we especially pray in this city that we recognize things, that we do the things that are the right things. And I close this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Dave, thank you both for participating there. I appreciate that. Council, we have one set of minutes that we need to approve, so I'll look for a motion regarding our June fourth council meeting, our work meeting minutes, excuse me.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Layton City Council work meeting of June fourth, 2020, as written.
Okay, is there any corrections or concerns?
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So it's unanimous. Okay, item two on our agenda is our municipal events announcements. I'll look to council to see if any of them have any announcements there.
I just want to take a second for those in the audience and on the live stream. Via Facebook, our wonderful mayor has started up in the last little bit, something called Mondays with the Mayor. And if you haven't had an opportunity to get online and look at those and watch those presentations, I would highly recommend that you do it. It helps you learn a lot about the city and what's going on.
Wow, that was, that left field. Thank you, Dawn, I appreciate it. Along those lines, I'll, I'll actually add to that, that obviously, you know, I'm trying to kind of just help everyone understand our city and kind of help educate as well as inform. And certainly if any of you have any stories or know of a good story out there that you think would be worth sharing, please let me know because I think it'd be great to kind of recognize the value we have here within our city, not only just, I'm not just talking about businesses, I'm talking about citizens. A lot of them have accomplished a lot. Some of them may have an unusual collection or something like that. I, I just think it would be fascinating to kind of, you know, kind of help share that message, so reach out to me. I appreciate that. Council, Zach, do you have any for the Arts Council or anything? I have a film tomorrow night and a concert. Do you want to announce it? Oh, okay. So there is one more announcement on behalf of our Davis Arts Council. They've done a great job on trying to continue with social distancing and, and still having some amenities here for you, for our folks. And so tomorrow night, they do have one of their films. Again, I think it's, we're getting close to wrapping up on that film series, but certainly it's intended for, it's a family-friendly, fun event. So you do want to contact them. They, they do have to kind of issue a ticket, but yet certainly just so that they can make sure they don't get too many in there. But so far it's been well-received and, and a fun event for everybody and it's good for the kids. And then I believe they also have, da-da-da-da, you want to announce that?
No.
Are you saying that? No.
I don't want to talk.
You're good at it. This is right up your bailiwick. So they also have a concert, which I, you know much about the Fab Four or imitation?
I know everything about them.
Okay, let's go for it.
Hey, they're a Beatle, fake Beatle group, only they're really good. Okay? One of them is kind of a local and the other three come from all California. But if you like the Beatles, they're as good as they get. And I can tell you that for running the amphitheater for 157 years, that they are good and they're fun. And they even look like the Beatles because they know how to dress up.
And they sound like them too.
Oh, yeah, no, they're, it's, yeah, it's fabulous.
So that, that takes place Saturday.
Yeah.
So.
But one other thing.
Go for it.
I'm assuming, I don't know, that Friday, you tell me to get a bike. What was that for? Oh, for the, they're going to open the overpass.
This weekend.
That's what I've been told.
This weekend. We don't know the exact time, but we'll be-
You said Friday.
We're going to do a, again, this goes along with our centennial. We're, we're trying to acknowledge the fact that we, we, Layton is 100 years old and Gentile being a major landmark and a key street that's been there for the past 100 years.
Well, it's, this is the 100th time they fixed it, so.
So yes, we're going to do a little, I wouldn't say ribbing cutting, but similar to a ribbing cutting tomorrow at three. However, UDOT may need to still do, finish up a couple of little small repairs before they actually open it to the public, but it will be opened either late Friday night or Saturday. So just know that, but as for all intents and purposes, we're going to go through a fun little ceremony. So thank you, Mr. Thomas. Okay, that wraps up our municipal and, oh, excuse me.
Madam Mayor, I just, I don't know what time, it was good to, to mention this, but we had, we had a couple of tragedies here in the city this week. One, you probably knew that a young lady lost her life and was found in Case Creek. A suspicious death and in our, our hearts and thoughts and prayers go to their family at this time. That's, I can't even imagine. And second, we had a family that was, that's being investigated as a hate crime, targeted for putting up Black Lives Matter signs in their, in their home and had their tires slashed or their SUV and their tent trailer and hard-working family, taking care of their kids like all of us. And that's being investigated. Hopefully we can, both of these tragedies don't belong here in this city. They're both bad. We can do better. I just wanted to, to mention that, Mayor, and, and hopefully, again, hopefully Layton PD has been professional and we can figure out what happened and, and make amends, but tough, tough week.
Just add to that, Councilman Morris, on the, the hate crime situation, in talking with the family, it's been pretty amazing to see just how amazing the city of Layton is. What happened in, in response to this was this family has been inundated with goodwill, well wishes and neighbors who had set up a GoFundMe to get them some money to help with the repairs, but the repairs were actually taken care of by Big O Tires free of charge. And in discussion with the family, they were just, they said they were loved Layton before it happened, that this was kind of just a, hopefully a one-off incident, but that they loved Layton just as much or more than they did before it happened because of the way they were treated and the way they were swallowed up by the love of their neighbors. And so we don't have to agree with each other, but we know that that doesn't belong in our city, but I was really heart, my heart was warmed by the way that they were taken care of by people who didn't ask about any political persuasion, all they asked about is how they could help. And it was, it was a testament to the city and it's a testament to the people who live here. So thanks to all those involved and let's hope we have a little bit better week next week than we had this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on today. Well, my next item is going to be a verbal petition and I don't see Jeannie in the audience, but I do want to give her acknowledgement. She's an older lady that comes to our city council meetings quite regularly, used to, and has been very faithful in acknowledging what today is. So for that reason, I'm going to read the proclamation regarding Constitution Week. So if you wouldn't mind here, actually, maybe I'll take this mask off. Okay. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of government in a citizen-centered republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, in an inspiring document that represents a beacon of hope for freedom for our, for other nations, many of which desire to replicate not only its thought-provoking words, but also its effective accomplishments. And whereas September 17th, 2020, marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial, it's memorial, yeah, sorry, its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Joy Petro, Mayor of Layton City, along with this city council, the Layton City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I set my hand and caused the seal of my office to be affixed this 17th day of September, 2020. So, thank you, Jeannie, for reminding us and I think that we can all appreciate what our founding fathers meant when they had written that document and how inspiring it was. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, which is our citizens' comment period. This is a time when we will be able to, where the council can hear various presentations from our citizens or if you have any concerns that is not an item within our agenda, you're welcome to stand up to either one of the mics and present your case. We tip, just so you know, we absolutely need your name and address for the record. And as I mentioned, I want to make sure we give you ample time, but please be considerate of the fact that we do have a lot of items here and we want to make sure everyone gets heard.
Oh, hello, my name is Erin Harding and I live in Layton. Oh, my name is Erin Harding. Yes. Next slide, please. My name is Erin Harding and I have- My name is Erin Harding and I have lived in Layton for almost all my life. I have seen the East Ridge housing go up across from my block and continue to expand. I live in the Hidden Hollow subdivision and I feel that with these new changes, we should think of the citizens in mind. Most importantly, those that wish to cross our streets and our children who must cross to use the bus stop and can, and cannot do so safely. I would like to propose a crosswalk on 1450 East slash Emerald Drive. Next slide, please. The next slide, um, and this one contains general, a general idea of where a crosswalk should be placed. The arrow indicates where I think the crosswalk should go. Next slide, please. And here attached is two photos of traffic coming down fast on Antelope Drive and 1450 East and the ideal general place for a crosswalk. Thank you, next slide, please. My suggestion for placing a crosswalk on such a busy street is to put a hot crossing in like what we, and look, and like what we have further on the east of Antelope. This will stop traffic and allow pedestrians to cross safely. I would also ask that we put heated strips in this crosswalk because of our icy winters and the safety of our residents. Next slide, please. Pricing for this project may vary, but can you really put a price on the safety of our citizens? Countless times I have seen pedestrians try their hand at what is now, what now is a human game of the video game Frogger. Crosswalks are the glue that holds us society together. How many must die or be injured before this product, this project is put underway? Next slide, please. I understand that the Davis School District also needs to be a part of this conversation. Therefore, I would like to ask that the, that Layton City and Davis School District also have a serious conversation about installing this crosswalk. Next slide, please. I am happy to answer any questions currently. I also would like to request a meeting with the Layton City Council, Mayor Joy Petro and staff to discuss this important issue further. Questions?
One quick question.
Yes.
I'm, I'm very impressed with your presentation.
Thank you.
And I know typically it's not appropriate to ask age, but, uh, you seem rather young compared to most of the folks that come in and make a presentation.
Yes.
Are you in junior high, high school?
Oh, I'm in junior high.
Junior high? And Erin, are you doing this as part of a scout project or just because you feel the real need?
Well, it's sort of a half and half thing. Half of this is because of my Girl Scout Silver Award project and half because I feel this issue is very important to be discussed.
And I wanna thank you for coming because I don't know, 15, I could have done this, but however old you are, but, um, great presentation. Um, I do know from driving up in that area that this kind of is a concern, especially now that Emerald goes all the way through. Um, it didn't for years when I lived up there, but, um, that, that road is getting a lot busier, so thank you for taking the time to do this.
Thank you. Um, next slide, please.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
I live right here. When I saw you bring this up, I said, this girl is speaking my language. Because my wife has been telling me this and she's probably watching, she's probably cheering for you in the living room that you're bringing this for us. I can tell you that we've had, we've actually had discussions about this very thing, um, because I think it is very important. So thank you for bringing it back to our, our, the front part of our brain. And let's hope that we can find some solution. Because the, the issue in the past has been, it's hard because there's dips on both sides of that and it's hard to put a crosswalk at the bottom, especially because you mentioned it's very icy in the wintertime. So we're trying to find some sort of solution, but I'm sure we can come up with something. So thanks for bringing this to us and I was very impressed by your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration. I know whatever your committee decides will be undoubtedly perfect and beneficial to our city and government. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That was, that was very well said and very well prepared. I was, like I said, I'm impressed with it, but, um, and we, we do recognize that area. Okay, as Erin's gathering up her things there, we certainly have another microphone over here. If there's anyone else that would like to make a comment or a new topic, I mean, this is the citizens' portion of our meeting, so you're welcome to bring up.
Is this required?
No, you're fine at the mic.
Okay. Hi, uh, this is my wife, Jerry. Um, my name's Dave, we're the Rigbies.
Okay.
I'm gonna go in a roundabout way. I'm gonna start off by, um, discussing a few things. Um, the Rigbies have resided in Layton, Utah with my parents, um, coming into Layton, Utah. I, I figured back about 1964. And we've been here ever since, myself and my wife have been here, um, for, for 28 years together and have resided in two other locations. And the discussion today is on the third location that we're interested in, um, building a home. So, um, yeah, you're probably familiar with the name Valley View Drive. Um, I understand that there's been a lot of discussion about Valley View Drive in the recent past. Um, with the Highway 89 project, um, Valley View Drive's being turned into a frontage road. Um, I know when I went to the open house, they, they showed that Valley View Drive was even gonna have a, a bike lane. I don't know if Layton City's aware of that, but it was gonna go all the way from 193 clear down to Cherry Hills area. Um, so there's, there are some plans. Now, Valley View Drive, from my viewpoint, um, looks like a road that's been neglected over the years. Um, it's probab, it's the furthest east road that connects north to south. And, uh, it's, we know, I, I've heard before that it once was Highway 89 and then they straightened it out and put Highway 89 down through there. Um, so it's, it's got a lot of history. I, I think the next biggest road going north to south is probably Fairfield Road. Um, that basically travels all the way through town. Um, so it's a, it's a pretty important road and yet in the 55 years that we've lived or been associated with that property, um, very, very few improvements have ever been done. And the improvements that are done are usually only done at, uh, the owner's expense. And I understand that's part of what goes on is when you build a home, you have the expense of curb and gutter and such. But, um, we've been working with the engineers and it's feeling like we're getting very little headway and we feel like there's some things that could be reasoned out, um, here in the council, um, as we present them. Um, I wanna talk a little bit more about Valley View Drive. Um, I've done a little bit of work and if I can pass these around, I've got about 10 of them. So if the council gets them, if anybody in the back row needs them, that's fine. Oh, do you have the other one? What I've got is the first page there is just my drawing of Valley View Drive. Um, it's gonna be kinda close to what it is, um, and what it looks like up there. If you look at it, and I'm particularly interested in the south end, because that's the end that I live on, I got some little marks along the edges that kinda indicate where there is either curb and gutter with one line or curb and gutter and sidewalk with two lines. And if you look at it, uh, there's, it's very, it's very sporadic in where those, those are. Um, our property is that at the top of the page there, the Rigby property, and that's just kinda roughly where it would sit. Um, so what I'm, what I'm concerned about is we've been asked or required by engineering to put in curb and gutter. Do you wanna come up and present some? Yeah, come on up. Um, let me just kinda give you some of, some idea of some of the problems that we have down along the, that end of the road. One of them being that, um, the water, for the 55 years that I've known of that property, has just landed on the road, gone to the side and, and gone down into the ground. Um, you know, if there's a lot of water, it goes, it goes to that location, goes to a driveway or something like that, goes down the driveway and hopefully people channel it away. Um, I got one example I wanna give, that, that lot to, to the north of me, um, they've tried to put a two-inch little pipe with some brick behind it so that they can channel water past their driveway. Um, and the water that does come down their driveway goes into their garage and out the back of the garage. Okay? Um, so I'm, guess I'm just kinda proposing that there's, there's some history of problems up in that area, but most people just deal with them and let the water run. Okay? So what I'd like to do is turn a little bit of time over to my wife and she's gonna present exactly what our concerns are with our, um, lot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Um, we're actually be very brief. We do want to, um, we've been working with Layton City since April and we've been very grateful for the support we've received. We've met with, um, engineering department and with, um, Brandon, um, Layton City. We've done multiple meetings, we've done Zoom meetings, we've had a site visit trying to, um, address the concerns. And what I will tell you is, to be very clear, we are in no way against curb and gutter. We are in no way, uh, we absolutely want to do the very best we can for beautification of our proposed building lot. Um, we currently live on Oak Lane, um, have curb and gutter partway and then it breaks and then it, so, so I get that. We understand that. But some of the concerns are, we would like to have the curb and gutter included. We will sign the bond, we will do whatever we need to to make sure that we're included in that. But the concerns are that we're an isolated lot. And if you look at the map on the front, it's, it's from Cherry Lane to Antelope. There's no curb and gutter at all. And so our proposal is, our request would be, let us absolutely do curb and gutter, but let's do it as a system on that road, not as an isolated build. There are a few discrepancies on, because it is a collector road. It was 55 feet in width, it's now 66 feet in width, which is great. But we don't have clarity. And when the site visit came out, there wasn't clarity on where the middle of that is. So you've got Folkman's across the street, it's a big red barn. You've got Folkman's across the street, you've got Rigbies across the street, you've got Folkman's down, you've got Mosses up. These are all old family names, we've been there forever. But there's not clarity on where that center line is. So if you take 33 feet this way and 33 feet that way, that's here, but it might not be here and it might not be here and it might, might not be here. So there's not clarity on the street of what that full width is. Um, and when you are putting the curb and gutter in, you do a single build. So on one end, it goes into a, uh, flower bed that's railroad ties and on the other end, it goes into a fence. And if it goes from 50 feet to 33 feet, excuse me, to 66 feet, you have eight feet that go down. So you're going along straight, curb and gutter, eight feet back, curb and gutter, go back out. Anytime you're doing snow removal, anytime you're having issues with ice, anytime you're having issues with any debris, any water, it's gonna collect right in front of that area. So to be clear, we're not, we are in no way anti curb and gutter. We just wanna be part of the system. When we asked the question in the Zoom meeting about what does that look like in terms of capital projects, what we were told is there are rumors and discussions of curb and gutter, but nothing yet exists in a capital project. And again, we're not, we, we may be clear, we really wanna have this occur, but as you do it as a single build, it's a half mile till the next curb and gutter. And so you're going to be putting a lot of concern and, and on the back page where there's some expenses that are listed, um, what we were told is we deed the property to the city, that extra feat, we pay for the asphalt, we pay for the curb and gutter, we pay for the tree removal, we pay for the inlet box. And then there's a pipe that has to go from, from highway, excuse me, from Valley View Drive to Highway 89. That's a pipe that drains that water all the way down because the problem is now created because of the curb and gutter. We would also pay for that piping and have to work with Layton City and UDOT to pay for that piping. And when we said, what's gonna happen when that curb and gutter gets put in for that entire street? And they said, well, that would be abandoned. We wouldn't need that anymore. So having curb and gutter in an isolated build causes concerns which result in expense and maintenance concerns for Layton City, not just for our property. And then there's a pipe that they're asking us to pay for as part of the concern to, to get the water out of the way. So that's, that's just what we're proposing is absolutely, we wanna be part of that, absolutely. We're happy to sign a bond, we're happy to say we'll, we'll commit to doing whatever we need to as part of the larger system because aesthetically it makes sense, efficiently it makes sense, in terms of overall cost, it makes sense. We're happy to pay for our portion of whatever we need to. We're here forever, we are here. This is the home we're building because we're getting too old. And this is my home for my niece. So we want to be here. But we, we would appreciate any consideration about allowing us to just sign what we need to. Uh, we've, we've talked with Mosses, we've talked with Folkman's, that's what we've, they've been allowed to do. I get that it's been a lot of years, Stuart and Sunny have been there for 30 years. I get that there are changes. But we just wanna have that option of being part of a larger system instead of just an isolated build.
Okay, well, Jerry and Dave, I wanna thank you very much for coming and bringing this to our attention. We'll, we'll check in, we'll look into this and get back to you. And I can attest that to this day, I have never had a carrot as large as I've ever seen come off your property when your dad ran that by.
Nor Ellen Francis, you absolutely know.
I mean, that thing had to been a good five, five inches in diameter, but yeah, thank you very much and we'll get back to you on that.
Mrs. Rigby, I, I didn't get your address that you currently live at. We are presently on, um, 2364 Oak Lane. It's the greatest neighborhood on the planet in Layton, other than Valley View, of course.
I know you got a lot of people coming. I do wanna offer one challenge for the city council mayor. Um, on Oak Lane, they finished it coming down really nice to a certain point. And then it's, uh, about impossible to get down it, uh, it feels like a hundred speed bumps for a little while. I don't know when that's gonna be addressed. But the challenge is this, if you'll get either a super hot or super cold drink, hold it over your lap and just go 20 miles an hour down there with it till, say, a half an inch from the top. And you don't get wet, then I'll pay you 20 bucks, just drop into my house. You got it. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to comment at this time? Okay, Gary, I know that typically we leave this open for any comments, um, that should come in via the online chat. Is there anything there? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, let's go ahead and proceed then on our, uh, agenda. We'll move down to our consent items. Typically, our consent items are items that, uh, we can actually take in action by the council in one single motion once they've been presented. So with that, I'm gonna have actually Mr. Terry Probert step up to, uh, present item number A, which is an agreement with, uh, Layton City and Waste Management.
Mayor members of the council, good evening. I bring to you Resolution 20-58. This resolution is authorizing the execution of agreement, of an agreement between Layton City and Waste Management of Utah for automated garbage collection in Layton City. It's a recommendation of staff of the city, particularly myself and the city manager, that the contract between Waste Management continue forward for another five years. This new contract would be under the proposal that they presented along with two other proposers. Uh, this year, the city did go out, as we've mentioned in previous meetings, to a request for proposal process. And we felt that Waste Management provided the most responsible and responsive proposal that will benefit the citizens of Layton, uh, most effectively. And at this time, we also like to commend them for their longstanding relationship. We do have two members of Waste Management here. They are aware that, that we would be making the recommendation. And so if you had any questions for them about that, uh, Mr. Leonelli and Mr. Friedman are in the back there and, and, uh, they express their appreciation and also the vote of confidence of the staff and their services and what they've done for the city. It is our recommendation and, uh, that council, uh, adopt Resolution 20-58 authorizing the city manager to enter into a negotiation of a final agreement with Waste Management and then to execute that agreement on behalf of the city council. Are there any questions related to that?
No, but can I take a second and share something with, about Waste Management? With the windstorm last week and the delay in service, not everybody in the city was notified of the change of days because they're not on Facebook or whatever, which I think is something aside. which I think is something aside that we maybe need to address, how to better notify our residents. But, uh, I, I live out in a 55-plus community, and some of the residents were very worried by 7:30 in the morning, their garbage had not been picked up at 6:00 a.m. like normal. And a driver was dispatched out and did pick up some of the trash that was out. Well, it concerned all the rest because they hadn't put theirs out, because they were told not to, because of the, the change in day. But Waste Management bent over backwards to accommodate that neighborhood, um, with all their concerns, and so thank you to, to that.
I would point out that over the years that I've been with the city, they've been very responsive and responsible. Uh, anytime someone has needed something, they're right there. Just a while back, we had someone who was concerned over staining, uh, in front of their home. Uh, they pulled the truck, did a complete inspection, sent another truck out to complete the route. I mean, they went through a very extensive process to make sure that they're not contaminating our streets, that they're providing a very clean and efficient environmentally frien- friendly process. I know in their proposal, they would state that they're also in the, uh, within the next year establishing a CNG program, and they'll be rotating out our trucks that service Leighton City from the current diesel trucks to CNG trucks as a way to help the environment and also to keep the noise level down. And so they're very, they're trying very hard to be a very good, uh, city partner in many different ways. And so for a number of those reasons, that our recommendation comes to you to continue forward with Waste Management.
You know, along those lines, I'll make one more quick comment. Um, this is how quickly they respond. I had a broken wheel on my, well, on my garbage can, and I was going to call them, I kept forgetting. I was less than a half a mile away from my home, visiting a neighbor. There, the truck pulls up, I saw the number on the side of the truck, I called it. And before I finished my conversation with that neighbor and got home, the repairman was there fixing it, so I commend you on your, on your quick response as well. It is very quick, so thank you very much. And I got to call regularly on that, because I live on, on Gentile, and I mean, they gets, the, I, it, we always have to put our cans up on the curb, so when you get a new driver, they don't quite know the height difference sometimes. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then we'll proceed on to item B, which is, um, the, uh, Mr. Price is going to be presenting, uh, for us, the Utah Department of Transportation, UDOT, um, Alternative Program, so, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, uh, I have the pleasure of introducing Resolution 2055. This resolution authorizes the city to accept the UDOT TAP or Transportation Alternative Program 2021, funding grant award of $200,000, and enter into an agreement with Leighton City and UDOT for the Case Creek Trail, Highway 89 Underpass Transportation Project, to be located slightly north of 200, or 2,700 north in Hobbs Creek Drive. So we've been working with UDOT for close to three years, two years, as they've worked to develop Highway 89. We've, uh, worked with them to look at the possibility of this pedestrian underpass. Um, this is one that's up in Summit County, but ours would be very similar. Um, the location of that is right at the bottom of this drawing, right here. But it does show an important connection to our existing trail system, and a connection that will go, uh, along Valley View Drive and then up to the Bonneville Shoreland Trail. There is no pedestrian crossing at this interchange, and so this point is our key pedestrian crossing for this area. And we believe that it's an important part of this trail system, as well as safe kids-to-schools routes. This is a little closer area, um, you can see how we plan to bring those trails back off of the underpass and connect to our sidewalks and then to the future trail system. This war- award can be used to fund the installation of the, the culvert. And the project could be included in UDOT's Highway 89 Improvement Project that is currently underway, and it would be considered a betterment. Leighton would cover the cost of this. Currently, the city has been awarded three external grants totaling $435,000 that can be used for this project. We just heard today from, uh, Mr. Van Wagner with the Active Transportation Planner for WFRC, and he sent a note that says, um, that told us that our application for $395,000, um, has been all but approved. It's been through all the subcommittees, and so it's ready to be awarded also. So that will be a nice thing. Today, we're here to talk about the $200,000. Again, you can see that, um, we've secured with internal, uh, city funds and outside grants, $685,000 towards this project. Staff recommends that council adopt Resolution 2055, authorizing the city manager to conduct negotiations and the mayor to execute an agreement between Leighton City and UDOT for the possible construction of Case Creek Trail, Highway 89 Underpass. This is a reimbursement grant, we are under no obligation. If the city did choose at one point to not put the culvert in, we would simply just not take the move. Any questions?
Dave, I have a couple. Um, one has to do with the timing. Um, it says that the local agency agrees to complete the construction by December of 2022. Is that a feasible timeline?
It is not, and they're aware of that, we had that conversation, and they said that that is standard language for their agreement, but they will look at an extension when that time comes.
Okay, and that probably answers the next question then, because some of the funding occurs after 2022. So I just was wondering where the, so that's, that, because it would take longer, the funding will be the 22, 23.
Yeah, we, we've been working on this, as you can see by the chart, since 2018, and these funds have trickled in. Most of them are very flexible. Um, the only one that we've had some trouble with is, um, the Utah Aitor Recreation Grant. And we held that grant for as long as we possibly could. It has now, um, lapsed. And so they said that we simply need to reapply, but they firmly stand behind this project. And so, as you can see on the chart, we're looking to apply this year for that same fund.
And the other question I had has to do with the, um, the Leighton has the amount that they would agree to. Um, but it also says that they're responsible for 50% of the utility relocations. Is that in addition to this $1.1 million?
And, not, as far as I know, Dawn, this is, that utilities would be associated with just the, um, culvert itself, not the entire stretch of the highway.
Okay.
And in this area, we have not identified any other than, um, a public works, uh, pipe that we are working on right now.
So not a huge expense then, okay.
Counsel, any other questions? I'm excited to see this project get going. I know I kind of worked with you in the very beginning on it, so, uh, you know, with the widening of 89, it's definitely a, a needed corridor for, for pedestrian traffic. So thank you for all your efforts, thank your staff for what, for the numerous times they've submitted these grants, and hopefully we can, uh, proceed forward here. So thank you.
Yeah, Jolene has just been wonderful, um, reaching out, finding these grants and applying for, and she's been very successful.
Mm-hmm, she has.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number C, which is a betterment agreement, with UDOT and Leighton City on various projects along US 89. So Mr., uh, Coburn will be presenting this for us, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, bring before the council Resolution 2056. Betterment agreement between UDOT and Leighton City for various betterments within the scope of US 89, Farmington to I-84 in Davis and Weber Counties, various locations throughout the city. UDOT is engaged in constructing the highway construction project identified as US 89, Farmington to I-84 in Davis and Weber Counties, Utah. UDOT has awarded a contract for the project, and the design-build contractor will design and administer construction of the project. UDOT's project construction necessitates relocating, adjusting, betterment, or protecting a portion of Leighton City's facilities in relation to the project. The city has requested betterments to various facilities within the scope of the project, consisting of the construction and installation of dark sky decorative street lighting at various locations within the scope of the project, soil, nail retaining wall, and utilities at Oak Hills Drive Trailhead, storm drain connection at the new Gentile and Gordon Interchange, an additional sidewalk from Andy Adams Park to 2125 East on the north side of Gordon Avenue Extension. The combined cost to the city for the betterments is $660,607.58. Staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 2056.
Any questions on this item, counsel? Or clarifications right here? Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, I do have a quick one. So there's a credit listed in the budget part of $93,000 on the lighting. Is that because what we're proposing is less expensive than what UDOT would have put in?
That's what UDOT is going to put in towards it, because they decided to go to the dark sky decorative lighting on top of our poles.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, you might as well stand up there, because you have the next item, which is.
Thank you, Mayor, bring before the council Resolution 2057. A petition for extra, extraterritorial sanitary sewer service. Calvin J. and Carol C. Moss, trustees for the Moss Family Trust, dated October 2nd, 2012, approximately 421 East Love Lane, 2625 North. Resolution 2057 authorizes the city manager to grant a petition for extraterritorial sanitary sewer service. Leighton City received a petition from Calvin J. and Carol C. Moss, trustees for the Moss Family Trust, dated October 2nd, 2012, requesting sanitary sewer service to be provided to the petitioner's home, which is located outside the city limits. Due to the location of the city's existing sanitary sewer lines, only the installation of a sanitary sewer lateral would be required. The petitioner is aware of the following conditions and requirements. That there is a payback of $939.42 associated with the connection to the sanitary sewer line the petitioner will be required to pay. That paying all fees associated with this petition, including connection and impact fees, is the petitioner's responsibility. That the installation and maintenance of the lateral and necessary construction requirements is the petitioner's responsibility. That the water sanitary sewer rates are significantly higher than the rates for those within the city's limits. That a detailed plan for construction will be submitted. Staff recommends council adopt Resolution 2057.
Any questions, counsel?
I just had one, uh, Terry. This in the, in the letter, it said, uh, extraterritorial services shall not be provided or continued if there is insufficient capacity for those within the city limits. You don't consider that to be a possibility?
No, this was, uh, this line that they're looking to is, got plenty of capacity.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
Counsel? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to our last item of our consent, which, uh, will be presented by Chad Wilkinson, our economic director, regarding a, uh, final plat review.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is a follow-up to a previous application that you, uh, looked at back in December of 2019. This is the final plat for Ferwood Estates subdivision. Because this property is located in an area that's designated as sensitive lands, the council is the land use authority to approve the final plat. The property is located approximately 3,200 East Fernwood Park Road, uh, shown on the map above, uh, with the red dot. Here's a, a closer aerial view of that property, uh, outlined there in red. This is a three-lot subdivision. This subdivision was required to go through an extensive geotechnical analysis. There, there were some conditions that are applied during the construction of the project, uh, for continued monitoring and, and, uh, during the building of the homes, uh, to, to make sure that they comply with that geo- geotechnical requirements of that report. Um, again, the applicant has completed all of the conditions that were, um, required at the time of preliminary plat approval, and we're now coming forward, uh, for final plat approval. Uh, this was reviewed by the planning commission and, uh, and by staff, and we recommended that the council approve this final plat for Fernwood Estates subdivision. Be happy to answer any questions if we can.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I guess this will just, uh, this is right across from the famous castle, correct?
Yeah, very close, yep.
So Chad, just really quick, the sensitive lands, as you mentioned, geotechnical studies. We have, we do some, and then there's a, a third party, is that how that works for the?
So the applicant has a geotechnical engineer that does the, their own study, and then we have a third party review it, yep, that's right.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, counsel, that concludes our consent items. There's several items here, so, um, I'd appreciate one of you stepping up and identifying all these items and making a motion.
Okay, I guess I will.
Madam experience over here.
So Madam Mayor, on our consent items, I make a motion that we, um, approve the following items. Uh, the agreement between Leighton City and Waste Management of Utah for the Solid Waste Collection Services, Resolution 2058. Um, Resolution 2055, um, regarding the UDOT, um, Transportation Alternative Program for a Case Creek Trail, Highway 89 Underpass Transportation Project, um, for a betterment agreement with Utah and Leighton City for various, um, items along Highway 89 as Resolution 2056. Um, a petition, um, under Resolution 2057, for, I need to make sure I say this right. First looked at, I thought it said extraterritorial, but it was like, no, that didn't make sense. For extraterritorial sanitary sewer service for the Moss Family Trust, and a final plat for the Fernwood Estates subdivision, which is actually at about 3,300 north, it's directly across the street from 3,333, so, Fernwood Park Road.
Okay, there's a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor of the consent items as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
I don't, I don't hear any nays and nyes, or I didn't, I heard all of them say yea, so that passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Okay, we'll now move on to our public hearing portion of our meeting. Um, our, which, I guess I need to have a motion to open our public hearing, so I need to entertain a motion to open up a public hearing and, uh, I'm looking at these items here, and honestly, I'll entertain it either however you, counsel would like to do. You want to do it individually or collectively? And remember, we do have online comments that we could possibly get. Okay.
Make the motion to open the public hearings. Might as well do them all at once.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Chad Wilkinson, it looks like you've got all three of them.
Second.
Okay, let's, in second. I don't think we need to take a vote to say that we're open, but we are now officially open for our public hearing. It's been moved in seconded. So all three items will be presented by Chad. So, uh, with that, I'll let you go ahead and start, Mr. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. This first item is a rezon request at 508 North Adams Wood Road. Uh, you'll remember, those of you that were here during the general plan process that we adopted back in September of 2019, that the council, uh, looked at this property specifically. Um, there was a request during the general plan adoption process that this, uh, be looked at for a designation, um, that would allow for, in the future, an R16 zone district. a designation that would allow for in the future an R16 zone district potentially. So, that, that was kind of the groundwork for the proposal that we have tonight, which is to rezone the property from A agricultural to R16. It's about a 1.15 acre parcel in total, includes a couple of discreet properties there. That property is outlined in red on your screen. Again, this, you can see some of the surrounding uses. You've got some multifamily zoning directly to the west, an existing city drainage facility located to the, to the east, some other lower density residential in the form of a PRUD and then bordering some lower density residential to the north. As we looked at the general plan designation for this property, back when we were reviewing the general plan last year, we noted that, you know, it was appropriate for a designation that would allow for some higher densities, slightly higher densities than some of the surrounding properties, because it does form a transition between some higher density property to the west and some lower density properties to the north and east. So that is consistent with our, our general plan. The applicant has requested this, this change to R16. This was reviewed by the planning commission at their August 25th meeting. They are recommending approval of this, of this zone change and we are also recommending approval of ordinance 20-33, changing the zoning of this property from agriculture to R16. Be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing that the council doesn't have any questions, I'll now open it up to the public. Should anyone in the audience are here to speak on behalf of this item regarding the Stevens rezon, you're welcome to stand up to either end of the podiums and again, state your name and address if you could. Seeing that there are none, and I'm sure it's a little quick for any online, but at this point, nothing, so we'll wait until the end and make sure that we address that should anyone want to comment online. Okay, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council, this next application is another zone change application. This property is located at 1650 North Main Street. The proposal is to change the zoning from CH, which is planned highway commercial, to mixed use, an MU zone. The property again is shown with the red dot on the screen. About 4.67 acres of property. This is a close-up view of that aerial photo showing that property. You can see the, the former use had some, some trailer sales there. Surrounding uses include Bayview Park across the street, some existing commercial to the, to the north and west, existing residential development to the direct north, some multifamily development, multifamily zoned properties and developed to the east, and then some additional commercially zoned property to the south. This is a copy of some, kind of a, an emphasis of some of the information from our general plan, really related to the plan for mixed use in our city. And when the general plan was adopted last year, we identified several places that were identified as town centers and mixed use corridors. This particular property is in an area that was identified for a mixed use corridor. Some of the characteristics that we look for in those types of corridors are good access to transportation systems, including transit, which this property has one of our major bus routes for Davis County that runs right by it. You can see some of those other routes that are, that go through the city there. This, this is one of the characteristics, as well as a buffer between some of the higher intensity uses along arterial and, and larger streets, as a transition to those lower density uses that are located further from those streets. So that's, that's a map showing some of those transit areas, as well as some of the future expansions identified in our general plan. This is the actual general plan land use map. This shows the existing land use for the property with also that mixed use overlay that was adopted as part of the general plan, as part of that mixed use corridor on Main Street. You can see that that property is within that mixed use corridor and that it would comply and be consistent with our general plan designation for the property. The applicant has proposed, again, that he will potentially develop a mixed use development on the site. As we've talked about in our work meeting, tonight, we're looking at the zone, the rezon portion of this. So this is a conceptual drawing. However, the discussion tonight is centered on the zone change and the appropriateness of that. This would be a place where this type of a project could be built, mixed use development with commercial on the ground floor, residential above. In addition to that, the townhomes that are, that are potentially allowed in that zoning district are shown in this conceptual drawing. There's another view of that building. So with that, I'm going to go back to that general plan map really quick as I finish my presentation. This is consistent with our general plan. The planning commission reviewed this at their, at their August 25th meeting and has recommended that the, the council approve this change from planned commercial highway to mixed use. And I, we at staff concurred with that recommendation and be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Hey, council, do you have any questions? Okay, seeing that there's none, I'll turn it over to public comments. Does anyone in the audience care to step up and comment on this item? Okay. Seeing that there's none, let's go ahead and proceed with item number C then.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. The last public hearing item is for a continuation of our discussion, the parking ordinance that we had at our last meeting. This has been a multi-month process to come up with some amendments to our parking ordinance to address some, some issues that we've had as far as parking rates that were inconsistent with current standards and also to try to come up with standards that would allow for what we call right sizing the parking requirements for development. At our last meeting, we identified some of the reasons for this proposed amendment. You can see those best practices and standards, right sizing the ratios and dimensions of our parking, making sure that we're being consistent in our, in our administration, the format of the code, and then creating some new parking tool options. Rather than going through each of those again in detail, which we did at our last meeting, I want to concentrate on the refinements that were proposed to this ordinance. I'm not going to, because we went through these in some detail in the work session, I'm going to go through these very quickly. We have standards related to electric vehicle charging stations, refinements related to several of the uses in our land use code, some of the areas that were omitted during the transference of the, the code to our, our online code program that we've now made sure we add back into that code station. Some additional refinements to our stacking spaces for drive-through uses, which are shown there on the screen. Some clarifications to some of those standards and tables that were proposed in the last ordinance that were brought up by our, our city council members in that last meeting. I did want to provide one, one additional perspective on an issue that came up during our work session related to the dimensions of the parking spaces. And I want to make sure that probably, it may seem that, that, you know, kind of out of the blue, why are we proposing these reductions in our, in our parking dimensions? But I want to maybe talk through that a little bit and give some additional perspective on that. The proposal, as we've stated in our previous meeting, is to go from a 20-foot space to an 18-foot space. That was the result of a lot of study, not only studying additional codes and standards from other cities, but also some pretty robust case studies, looking at design of sites, how those work. And one of the big goals that we had on those case studies was to make sure that we had right sized these spaces to accommodate additional open space. We, we found that as we did these site studies, that as we reduce that by, you know, that two feet, that we are allowing for additional opportunities to provide open space on these sites, better utilization of those sites. And time after time, these test fits that we did on, on various test sites throughout the city showed us that we could, we could accomplish that while still providing more than adequate parking for the majority of vehicles in the city by, by just reducing that, that space by just a couple of feet. In addition to that, as a bonus, besides those case studies that we did and the test fits that we did, we found that many cities had already gone to that standard, coming to that same conclusion, that you can still provide that right sized parking space while giving additional opportunity for providing additional open space. Now, as you think about that, every time you, you provide less pavement, you're providing the opportunity for more green space. So that was a major, major component. I, I don't know if we've mentioned that before, but Brandon and Tim spent a lot of time going through, what we do is test fit sites. We, we have, you know, sites that are not developed yet, we take those, we lay buildings on there, we lay development sites on, or development plans on there, and we come up with dimensions. And, and we are, I mean, we, we are confident that the spaces that we proposed are, are adequate while allowing us to have that additional flexibility and, and to provide for additional open space on these sites. So I, I don't know that we've articulated that in previous meetings because we've been focused on other issues, but I wanted to make sure that we articulated that tonight. That's, that's the reason for our proposal. It's, it's not just out of the blue, it was something that we've really thought, thought through, put some time and effort into. So that's the reason for that. We had some other questions that came up that I'll, I guess I'll let the council kind of drive as far as some of the other issues. And as you want to ask questions about that, we'll, we'll respond to that. But with that, we are recommending approval with the refinements that were talked about in our previous work session that I just quickly went through on the screen. We're recommending approval of this parking ordinance amendment and I would be happy to answer any questions.
This is a continuation, so council?
Chad, I, there was one thing I had written down that I forgot to ask last time. So, in the bike parking ordinance, is it written such that all the bike parking could be internal? I, I had visited an apartment complex in which they had a bike room for their residents, so it was not outside. It was inside in one of the buildings. Is, does that allow for that to happen?
Yes, yeah, that, that, there's flexibility in there that that could occur. We do require that they be distributed throughout the site on a big development, so you don't just have, you know, 30 spaces in one side of the site with none on other sides, but I, I don't see any reason why those couldn't all be inside with the design.
Along that line, refresh my memory on where we're requiring that bike parking.
Where or?
What type of?
Situations or?
Yeah, situations where we're going to require that, because I'm not so sure that's necessary.
New multifamily development would be someplace where we'd require that. Really, I'm gonna, Brandon, do you have a copy of the ordinance we could throw up there on the screen? Maybe we'll grab a copy of that and I'll try to answer that question for you.
My feeling is, is I think it'd be nice if they wanted to, but my reservation is requiring them to do it.
Is it, let me, is it, is the location, or I guess what I'm saying is, we have some of the locational stuff. I think what Tom is asking is what types of uses these would be required for. It's really, it's, it's new development, but there are rates based on the type of development. So you're going to have, for residential, you're going to have higher rates than you would for the commercial development, for example. We can, we can find those for you. We, I, we'll just need to pull that ordinance up on the screen real quick for you.
One other, one other, I guess, comment, something to think about, I guess, on the dimension part. I had a discussion with a friend of mine today and mentioned we were going over this and he contacted a body shop owner here in town, a friend of his, and he said 10% of his body shop business is parking lot related, damage to cars, not just the door dings, but major bumpers and everything else is getting hit. So I'm a little concerned about, still about that dimension shrinking and the vehicles hanging over out in that traffic area and stuff. Just a comment.
And I can attest to that. On Valentine's Day this year, I had a gentleman back up in a parking lot and I had pulled forward into my spot, but he was in a big truck with a hitch on the back and didn't see my little car and proceeded to back in and damaged the front end of my car. And his comment was, is I, I just didn't realize that that space was so close to me. So I do have some reservations about shortening the, the distance, especially for trucks. We do see a lot of them.
I know, Chad, while you're pulling that up, I know this was a concern in our earlier meeting regarding the length. In your opinion, other than green space, what would be the advantage of shortening these up?
Anytime that we can, we can have less pavement, then that's going to be, you know, more open space. We talked about green space, but it's also more efficient use of land. So if we, if we have a space that's right sized, that's, that's long enough, you know, without being, being too short, that's going to, you know, if you think about that across a parking lot, if you have an aisle with, with parking on both sides, that's saving four feet of pavement in that case. So it allows for some additional flexibility on sites. A lot of times, these sites are very tight and I think that what, what we're looking for is, is to have, you know, we want to have enough parking, certainly. That, that, everybody agrees with that. We're, and there's none of these standards we've adopted, reduce parking down to a point where there's not enough. But, but what we want to make sure that we're doing is not paving more than we need to. And anytime we put pavement on ground and create impervious surface, that there's going to be impacts to our storm drain system. So it, it kind of just, you know, there's, there's a number of storm drain, open space, flexibility in design. You know, we have to, as we look at areas that are being developed, we want to make sure that we're using those sites efficiently so that we can preserve other sites longer, right? If we, if we can have a site efficiently developed, then that preserves other land for future development down the road. So that, that's another, you know, preservation of, of land. We talked about some of the numbers and, and we have areas out there that, where we have large parking lots that are underutilized. You know, again, that's another thing where if we can, if we can use some of that land that doesn't need to be used for parking, then that preserves other lands from being developed too soon. And, and so it's, it's about, again, it's about preserving those lands for the future, efficiently using lands, providing more open space. You know, I think what, what we want to do is provide buildings, right? We want to have folks be able to, to put that, that, parking is, is important, but it also, it's not providing that square footage of building that would, you know, again, preserve future lands down, down the road, so.
Chad, you, normally you like to look at surrounding cities, Wasatch Front as comparison. You mentioned studies and case studies on the, on the parking on this issue. What are you seeing in other communities?
18 feet is pretty standard. Yeah, yeah, we have, we have some that have 20, there's no doubt about that. 18 feet's, we don't see a lot that go below 18, but 18 feet. The key seems to be that maneuvering aisle space. 24 feet, keeping that standard there is really, really important for that, hopefully avoiding the, the accidents that, that could occur from those being close. One other thing that I want to mention is 18 foot's a minimum. If a development, you know, Costco is kind of famous for, for going bigger.
Did you say Costco?
Costco is famous for bigger parking spaces. That's one user that I'm familiar with that I've approved before in other cities and, and you know, they just, they like to make their parking spaces bigger. And that, so we're, we're adopting a minimum, but that certainly doesn't preclude a developer from coming in and saying, hey, I'd like to, I'd like to do something a little bit bigger than that, to give their customers a little more room, so.
Where, where can I go see 18 foot?
Right out here in this parking lot?
Oh, it's right here?
Yeah, our parking lot's 18 foot spaces.
And the other ones, I've already hit two cars.
That's why I have a bumper or a hitch on my truck that hangs out.
That's the, that's the bumper. Yeah, there are.
They are 18 here.
Honestly, honestly, we've tried to implement our standard, so the sites that would have 18 out there would be non-compliant right now, but this, you know, we, it's 18 feet. Right now, the, the standard's 20 feet, but we have 18 foot spaces. And that could have been an older standard. I don't know the history of the, the standard here, but that's what these spaces are out in our parking lot.
Okay. So one last comment, and the green space sounds good, but what guarantee is it, it just won't be more building?
There's not a guarantee. I think what we found with those test fits though is that, you know, the buildings kind of are what they are. We don't have folks that are coming in with, I mean, we, we kind of have those standard building footprints that are being proposed right now. This gives the opportunity to use those, those same footprints that are proposing that have additional open space. I mean, it's potential, I guess I would say that that's not necessarily a bad thing. If we have someone that can, can have a slightly larger dwelling unit, for example, you know, that, that, that might be a good thing for that development. Also, you know, again, parking is a necessary kind of accessory use to these buildings, but what we want is the, the use. We want people to be able to build the buildings that they want to have on their sites and use that land for what we hope that it'll use for. Every time we have additional room for those buildings, again, it's, it's keeping or preserving other lands that don't have to be developed quite yet. So that's, our goal is to, with the right sizing is certainly not to create the issues, is to actually provide opportunity and to have, you know, more efficient use of those lands. That's, that's the goal. That's the only goal that we have. This is not in any way, any other, any other exercise other than to say, what's the right size for a parking space so we can efficiently use our land?
So Chad, don't we have other ordinances that address the actual design of the parking lot as far as, especially the larger ones, trees or landscaping or whatever that can provide some of that green space? And that's not being jeopardized, is it?
It's not being jeopardized, but we have, again, this gives more opportunity for additional landscaping. So you have, you have standards that talk about minimum landscape requirements, but you know, what we've seen is, is that there's additional opportunity for additional landscaping. And again, we have minimums and then we have, you know, some opportunities for more. Again, what we're trying to also do is make sure that we're, you know, the, the less impervious surface that we have, the better it is for our storm drain system. There's, there's a variety of benefits from having less pavement out there.
I just want to make sure it doesn't jeopardize what we already have in place for.
No, the landscaping standards remain exactly the way they are. We have, we have some landscaping standards that apply to new development, and those are not being proposed for change. that apply to new development. Those are not being proposed for change. Other than this might provide for a person to put a little additional landscaping in.
Okay, any more discussion?
So back to the chart that Brandon's brought up here. So on any retailer, commercial, we'd be requiring bar, bicycle, according to that chart?
That's right. Yeah.
You got a problem?
I just don't think, I think it's a, a luxury if they want to provide it. I have a problem with requiring it.
Anybody else have an issue with that?
Maybe I have a follow-up question on that same, in that same vein. I understand it in an apartment, stacked units, institutional, civic, retail, it seems to me in a retail scenario, it's much like, or maybe help me distinguish between that, the requirement for the bike and the choice for the electric, for the electric parking lot, parking stall.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, bike parking is, especially in the residential context, is something that we see a need for. There's a story that I, it's a true story. It's happened to me that I like to tell when we talk about bike parking. I, I know in my first job up in Oregon, I, I had a long discussion with a, a developer of an auto parts store about the need for a bike parking space. And for an auto parts store, I, I understood his concern. It's, it's an auto parts store. Why do we need a bike space, right? And at the time, we were a young family, starting out, had one vehicle. And we had our, our battery that needed to be replaced. And our option was for me to put the battery in a backpack and ride to the auto parts store and get a new replacement battery. And, and where did I put my bike when I was there? I put it in that bike parking stall that we'd required of that development. And so I, I mean, I think that, that's something that sometimes we don't think about is there are people that, that do access these places, that, that bicycles, either by choice or by just what they have, is, is what, what their mode of transportation is. I, I, I guess what our proposal is, is to require these. I think the, the rates that we require them at are, are fairly low. One thing to keep in mind is that bike parking spaces don't take up a lot of space. You, you have the ability to put bike parking spaces side to side pretty efficiently. So you can have several spaces, especially if they're both headed on both sides. You can get a lot of spaces under just a very small space of, of development. So I think we do see this as being something that's beneficial, encouraging active transportation. So we, we're, we're recommending this. Ultimately, it's a policy decision by the council. I think we've tried to keep our, our rates reasonable on the required parking for those bikes. Brandon, is there, is there an existing requirement for bike parking anywhere in the code? Or is this a, a new? So this is a new, a new standard that we are proposing?
Can, can I answer your questions, Zach? So if I'm driving an electric vehicle, I want to go to a retail store. I'm, even if I don't have a place to plug my car in, I'm still gonna have a place to park my car because there's gonna be a spot. If I ride my bike to that same facility, unless I park my bike in a parking stall, which chance starts, it's gonna get run, run over, but I would have to take it into the store with me if there's no other option or, you know, leave it laying out on the sidewalk where it's in the way. So I, I do see that there different circumstances. I, I support the bike thing. I want to use Station Park as an example. They have one little area in the main part of that whole thing for a handful of bikes. It's right off the bike trail. And we go down there and we have to basically take our bikes with us because we have no, the, the few racks they have are full. And, you know, so one of us stays outside the store while, or the restaurant, watching the bikes while the other one goes because there's no place to put them. So I, I think they're a necessary, especially, I actually have a harder time in apartments and stuff because they can be taken in or they can be put on their patio or, you know, whatever. But I think businesses should definitely provide.
And I, I, I can understand the argument. I guess I just have a little bit of a hard time with the size of our city and the un, unbikability, if that's a word. Right? And requiring it as opposed to giving it as a choice. So I mean, I want to make sure we have a situation where, you know, people can get where they need to and they can have space to park. I just worry about a, a requirement of such. So, but that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Anybody else want to chime in on our bicycle discussion?
I just think if it's, if it's, if it's not required, then it won't happen. That's the other part. That's the other side of it is that if, if it's not required, then it just won't happen. It'll just be like, yeah, we don't need to do that. And then it, the, where you're talking about this act of transportation that Chad is talking about will never take place. It won't, it will, it will never happen.
Right. And I, and I guess that's, that, that could be the, the negative connotation. And the opposite could be that they're requiring them at every single new retail, commercial or service office and no one's using them.
Yeah, no, and, and, and I don't know what these will look like. I know we opened a store in Boise, Lifetime Store. And in Boise, it's, of course Boise is very bike friendly and, and so is Meridian and and Nampa. But we're not talking about, at least, like, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad. Like you see it, it, elementary schools with three and four racks of, you know, that are twenty feet long. This is a bar. This is, this could be just one of those wavy bars outside that's just, you can attach your bike to. That's what I envision with.
Yep, that's exactly right. Yeah, you could have, I mean, there's, there's variety of, of choices given there, but you could certainly just have a, a very small rack. Some of them are, you know, you can get, if you, if you have the bikes facing head on towards each other, you can get four or five bike spaces just in a very small rack. So it's not, not taking up a huge amount of space.
How big is something like, oh, you mentioned Burt Brothers? Remember we were talking on the phone about that? How, how big is that square feet wise, do you think? That, the, a building that would house Burt Brothers? How, how big do you think that, that site would be?
Uh, we just, we just approved that recently. Do you remember? You know, that's, that type of a building, you're probably looking at twenty to thirty thousand square feet, I'd imagine. It's, it's, it's gonna be smaller than a, a grocery store, but fairly big building.
They need ten bike stalls for, for brothers.
So they can send, sell ten batteries.
But again,
I'm just saying if they're required.
Ten, ten bike parking spaces could be accommodated on a rack that's not too, not too long. You know, if, if you have a, a minimum space of two by six, then you've got, for, for ten of those, it's just, it's twenty by, by twelve, basically, on the side. So it's not, not a huge space.
Lots of, lots of Chads driving their bike to the.
You know, if I hadn't had that experience, I, I tell you, the, the ride back was really hard because it was uphill with that battery in my backpack. But that, that made an impression on me.
Well, I personally, I'll, I'll chime in here quickly. I, I am a proponent of bicycling. And I think that as our city continues to grow, there's gonna be a lot more, unfortunately, dense housing and bicycles are gonna become a, a, a major means. And I know in our parks plan, we certainly are identifying trails and wanting to do that connectivity. So I think it's something that we, we, we definitely need to consider, especially if we're looking at changing the overall plan now. Anyway, uh, this is a public meeting. So I'm curious if anybody in the audience would like to chime in on this particular topic. This was a, a discussion we had in a prior meeting. So it's a continuation. So we're hoping to take some action here tonight, but okay, seeing that there's none, and it's also our last item as far as our public item, I will ask our attorney. Gary, has there been any online comments? There's been this many comments online. So with that, counsel, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion regarding our public hearings.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we close the public hearings. And you want a motion on the first one?
I think you have to identify each ordinance for.
I just want to make a motion to close all the public hearings and pass ordinance twenty thirty-three granting the rezon request to the Stevens Rezone.
Okay, second. Okay, well, uh, this is a roll call vote on public hearings. So I need to take an individual roll call on each item, correct? So that we are legal, even though we can open and close them in one. So with that, I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Thomas on the end there.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilman Bloxham.
Aye.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Our rezone passes. We'll look for a motion then on item B.
Madam Mayor, I motion that we approve ordinance twenty thirty-two, the rezon request on sixteen fifty North Main Street in Lake.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Again, I'll take a roll call vote on this. I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Morris.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Bloxham.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item C.
Madam Mayor, I, I move that we approve ordinance twenty dash twenty-nine, amending Leighton City zoning ordinance title nineteen, zoning chapter nineteen point one one, mobile home parks and travel vehicle parks, chapter nineteen point twelve, off-street parking.
Can I make a question on the motion first before it's seconded?
You can.
And ask Councilmember Morris if he would, uh, consider amendment to it? To, uh, keep the dimensions of the parking spot at twenty feet? Leave the carports as an, as an option? And I'm good with the bicycles being required. But one question on the RV parking. I don't think we need to restrict them from being on the lawns or anything for that shorter period of time. So I don't really, I don't know how that's written into the ordinance.
It's not in there now.
Okay.
Yep.
So I guess it would be to keep the dimensions at twenty feet and allow the carports to be an option.
No, actually Councilman Morris needs to, he'll accept it.
Yeah, no. So.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
No.
He said no.
Did not accept it. So I still need a
Oh, have to redo it now?
A second on the First Amendment.
If Councilman Day would like to make a substitute motion, the substitute motion would be appropriate. And it can be voted on separately. And then if it fails, you go back to the primary motion, the main motion.
Make your motion, Tom.
Doesn't his need to be voted on first?
No. No, a substitute motion is, would need to be voted on first. It comes prior to the primary motion. So. If you want to make a.
Yeah, yeah, I'd, I'd make that motion then that we, uh, approve everything except for leave the dimensions at twenty feet and allow the carports as an option.
Okay, so counsel, what we have before us is a substitute motion regarding item C. Stated as Councilmember Day mentioned, is there a second on that motion?
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded on the substitute motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Don't you have a roll call vote on that one?
Oh, a roll call? Oh, excuse me. All right, well.
Can you, uh, re, just refresh my mind, the second part of that with, as, as it relates to the carports?
Yeah, as the ordinance reads now, they're not allowed.
So as proposed, carports would be allowed as an option in addition to garages for that required parking. Is that what you're?
On any structure or just older ones? Because that's where I was a little confused.
On, on any right now, but you, we certainly, if you wanted to modify that for existing.
No, I would like the carport option to be there for new and existing.
Yeah, that's the way it's written right now.
Okay, okay.
So then you want to restate your motion because realistically, there's only one item.
Restate would be the dimensions. Keep that at twenty feet. Okay.
Okay. So only the dimensions are the only thing that changed. Okay.
Okay, so as that.
Use on how that carport thing was after the discussion. That was actually written still.
Okay, so let me restate what the substitute motion is then. That we adopt the, um, ordinance as presented with the substitute motion identifying the length of the parking stall to be twenty feet versus eighteen. So Councilmember Thomas seconded that motion. You're still in favor of that?
And he'll second that one too.
So back to the course of action. I need to take a roll call vote on this. So I will start with Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Bloxham.
No.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
No.
Councilman Morris.
No.
Councilman Thomas.
Yep.
Okay, let the record state that it was, uh, three to two on that substitute motion. Now I'll go back to the original motion. So Councilman Morris, would you like to state your original?
It was three to two and.
Three.
No, not approving.
Two nays, three in favor.
Oh, I thought it was a tie.
All right, three nay, two in favor.
Two and three. Here's five. Sorry, you guys, it's getting late here. It failed. How's that? Is that a better way to say it? Does it failed? He's an attorney. What are we asking him for? Okay, sorry, I just misstated that if I did. Okay, so let's go back to the original motion, just so that we are clarified here. So Councilman Morris, you want to make your original motion?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-nine, amending the Leighton City zoning ordinance title nineteen zoning, chapter nineteen point one one, mobile home parks and travel vehicle parks in chapter nineteen point one two, off-street parking.
Been moved and seconded. I will take a roll call vote. So with that, I'm gonna start with Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bloxham.
Aye.
Councilman Day.
No.
Councilman Thomas.
No. For the third time.
Okay, Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Okay. Let the record state one more time. It was, it's been passed with a vote of three to two. Okay, very good. Okay, that concludes our public hearing and pretty much our agenda as stated here. There is, I do want to follow up on two items under unfinished business. Earlier in our work meeting, we did discuss the pickleball. And I just want to make sure I understand the direction or that, that perhaps we give clarity to the Parks Department. Are we in, in support of the plan that was presented tonight? I mean, this, we don't have to take a vote. I just need to, some nods, make sure, I mean, this is, are we in favor of the, of what they presented?
Yeah, I think they did a good job. They've come back. There's a few little things that we'll talk about. It's not, I don't feel is important right now, but no, yeah. I like it.
Okay. And, and I like it too, but I think that they need direction on that additional parking at Ellison. That needs to be included.
Very good. Any other comments on that?
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the Ellison Park project, in favor of looking, continuing that discussion. I'm still not convinced that tennis is, that we need to be investing in more tennis courts.
And I agree as well. That was my concern the past was, I'm not sure that showing me that, uh, they have a hundred percent attendance at Leighton City tennis, you know, coaching. I don't think that has real much connection to me seeing that there's rarely anybody ever playing tennis in the parks that I see. So I still have, I still think that there were, in some ways, looking to, to try to find the aesthetic of it over the reality. And I, I still think there's a, I still think I have a little disagreement with, with the continuation of, of tennis as is, as something that's very similar to, to pickleball.
Well, and I think it's to be noted in that chart that he presented. I mean, he had the male and female use of the tennis. But if you look at the study, it, it was through two thousand seventeen. I think there's probably been exponential growth of pickleball in the last three years.
Yeah. But I, I do, I do like the Ellison Park idea. And I think that, uh, there's, there's room to grow out there. And I think a lot of Dave's comments about Andy Adams were well-founded from last time. My only concern with Andy Adams is honestly just getting rid of the tennis court on the other side and just making it all pickleball. All right, if that, if that was the case, I'd probably be on board with the whole process.
If, you know, in the beginning, I shouldn't say this out loud, but the thought was to get eight courts. I didn't think we were gonna get Danny Adams just because of the hoops we had to jump through. That wasn't the issue. The issue was to get somebody looking at eight courts. And I think we got that. Now, the one thing about tennis, I'm the one that kind of started the idea that really tennis is not the greatest thing right now. But I will say this. You want to comment? Come on up, Kathy. Give us your name.
Dave, it was a big.
You know.
A big, big tennis fan right there.
All you gotta do is just listen till the end, then you'll retract. Um, but tennis still is played and kids are, and one thing I will agree with, when we, they, uh, tennis lessons, we do a lot of, and so giving them an opportunity to have tennis lessons in their neighborhood, you know, where they can walk to or get shuttled to quickly is a plus. And I don't think, you know, if you want, well, he talked about painting the courts, didn't he?
Yeah.
So you could play pickleball there. So, I mean, you're, you're not like eliminating the possibility.
Yeah.
But, you know, if somebody said you want to build two tennis courts, then I would have a problem. One, I'm thinking, you know, it's an amenity. People are going to use it. They may not use it for tennis. They may use it for roller skating or whatever, but they'll have, you know. So that's kind of my feeling.
I got a question for you, Dave. The basketball hoops kind of intrigued me. I think there's a real need for that. Were you suggesting that those go on some of these courts?
Sure.
As dual use, multi-use courts?
Well, yeah, if a tennis court isn't being used for tennis.
Might as well shoot a hoop.
You know, then you, you have two courts on it, probably not two courts, two baskets, put them where you want them. You know, but yeah, I mean, that just gives you another use. They're gonna, you know, I wouldn't think they would be in the way of tennis. I don't play tennis. Kathy might. And so there might be an issue there, but, you know, but I just think that for the younger kids, wherever we do it, my concern was we put in smaller baskets so they can actually play and not have to go out there and heave the ball up, you know? So there could be some issues, you know, where it's at. I don't, I don't know. I don't, you know, but I think we need to do it.
So my nod is I was very pleased with what they brought back.
Okay.
But I would like to see the basketball hoops incorporated where they could be. And I, I would like to see something still on the parking on Ellison Park, that temporary park.
I, I.
But I was pleased with the presentation and what they brought back.
Okay, good. I think that, uh, I think that gets, it gives them the direction we need and also to know that, uh, you know, we've listened to our citizens as well. And I was pleased to see eight courts in one place. I think that's definitely a plus. And I like the idea of extending that parking. I've, I've been out there several times and I, I know I had a discussion with Alex on that and, um, there's some alternatives we can do there. We can throw down some rotomalt or something like that to kind of help with the dust. But just, just so, um, anybody that's still here, I appreciate your patience. So we'll, we'll proceed, but you just need to be patient as well and understanding that, you know, the courts, uh, we'll, we'll proceed with, but we won't be able to give you a full parking lot, all the nice amenities. I know you're comparing us to other cities, but, uh, certainly that's a valuable park, that's valuable land out there. And we just want to make sure we utilize it right. And so that's, that's really where we're all coming from. And just to kind of wrap this meeting up, you want to make a comment? So the Ellison Park was scheduled Ju- July and, and David made the comment that, you know, the monies were kind of there. It could be pushed earlier. I don't know if in the bidding process and trying to get a contractor that lumping them all together would be a bigger project, that you might have more leverage to get a contractor versus another city that's building one or two little things. I don't know. It's just a thought. It is, and it's one of those things where honestly, since we do have, the funding is secured and we, if we want to give him the direction, uh, I think it's one of those things he could, he could start soliciting bids now, just so that we're, we're teed up and ready to go. You know, you mentioned the rent funding, which, you know, that's one of those things where the, the, the monies, basically, we've already collected the funding, so it's there, but we still need to go through the application process in order to apply it. So.
His comment was to give it a couple of months to see, and I think that's the way to go. And I think it was a very big positive that this costs less money than before.
Yes.
And so I think it's a very, from my perspective, it'd be very positive to go look in a, a couple of months, see what the fundings are and, and go for it as soon as possible.
Yeah, credit to you, Tom, for that, because, uh, that helped us cut the budget there, cut the cost on that one at Andy Adams. So potentially we could get the eight courts. I think those two things went together, so good work on that. No, you, it's your idea.
Well, I, I'll compliment all you guys. I mean, I, I think that's what the, you know, all of you kind of piped up in your own way. And I think that's what helped really mush, push this forward so that it, uh, we know, so that our staff knows what, what direction we want to go. So, um, kudos to you. I do want to say one more, oh, really?
I was just going to say aye.
Oh, no, not yet. I want to, I want to give you one more report since I kind of cut myself short on the last meeting as well. But just to give you a quick update on the CARES funding that, um, took place, you know, with the county. I, I just want everybody to know that this, uh, well, there's been one, out of the first tranche in the, in the funding that some of the cities gave back to the county. It, and, and dealing with our businesses, I want you to know that there was 534 applicants that applied for that funding. Of the 534, 519 of them was awarded. And the ones that weren't awarded, it's because they just didn't quite make, you know, they didn't make the criteria, very similar to ours. So that total was 7,895,000. So that makes the average for each one of those businesses awarded about 15,200. And in FYI, as far as Layton, Layton had 112 apply. So basically we are, so our businesses here had, uh, of that funding about one point, well, 1,785,000. So I, I, I just want you to know that the CARES funding is, is getting out there and being utilized. And I know that there'll be more, another tranche. I think they, they received it, but, um, I don't, I don't know what the action is yet on that. So anyway, just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on it. And, um, our secondary water discussion, we'll, we'll, we'll have that discussion take place at our next meeting along with additional items. So that's why I kind of teed that up for, for, um, uh, Mr. Appeloni. And one last thing is tomorrow, um, before you guys leave, I actually have some stickers for your hard hats that you guys can put on your hard hats. But anyway, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank them for, thank you for your patience, for your participation tonight. And I will accept that motion, Mr. Thomas, to adjourn.
Aye. I make a motion, we adjourned.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.